Half a day. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's April 22, 2022. The time is 3:39 PM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Friday, April 15, again on Wednesday, April 20, 2022, and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal and livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please begin by stating your names for the record-keeping purposes. We have two items on our agenda. The first item is Bill Number 278-36COR introduced by myself, Therese Terlahe, and Act to amend Section 75A 124 of Chapter 75A Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. The second item on the agenda is Bill Number 277-36COR introduced by myself, Therese M. Terlahe, an act to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 75A of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Chamor Land Trust Commission to enter into commercial submerged lands license agreements and to be known as the Guam Undersea Access for Homes Act, or GUAA. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with my vice-chair, Senator Telina Nelson, and also Senator Telotyegui, a committee member, Sisus Massey, for being here. All right. We'll begin with the first agenda item, Bill Number 278-36COR. As the main sponsor, I will just give a very brief introduction. So 21GCA Chapter 75A, Section 75A 124 clearly outlines the purpose of the existing Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund, or SIF, and the current purposes are for the subdivision, surveying, mapping, and registration of tracts of residential and agricultural land in the CLTC property inventory, and for the construction of infrastructure to include access roads, water, and power utilities to service CLTC residential and agricultural tracts of land. So Bill 278 proposes to add sewer to the type of infrastructure allowed under this fund, which would be a technical addition to ensure that there's no confusion as to the intent of this provision, as well as to reinforce the prioritization and need of sewer infrastructure to CLTC properties. If we are able to bring in sewer infrastructure to some of these tracts of land, then we will be able to divide the land up into more units or lots and thus be able to issue out a greater number of leases. Bill 278 also adds telecommunications infrastructure to be funded through the SIF. It's abundantly clear that connectivity is no longer a luxury but a necessity for most homes. This was further cemented by the COVID-19 pandemic, where we've adopted to and become more comfortable with work-from-home and homeschooling-type situations. As well as availing of government benefits, we are also requiring online capabilities. So our parents and schoolchildren, our businesspeople, and who did not have access to the Internet, were placed in a disadvantaged situation in the past two years, and we must ensure children and working parents have access to the Internet by ensuring that technology is incorporated into development plans by the CLTC. 2078-36 also ensures that the proceeds of commercial submerged land license agreements under the jurisdiction of the CLTC to include license fees, landing fees, and interest The CLTC program has been tested over the last 30 years by sometimes unthinkable and insurmountable challenges, but backed by the persistence of the trust's beneficiaries and the people of Guam, the program have withstood these difficulties. According to the Chamor Land Trust, there are 11,704 paid applications with 2,905 leases awarded. Resources for surveys and infrastructure are the largest hurdle to getting applicants into residential and agricultural leases. With uncertainty about Guam's economic recovery, inflation, and an ever-increasing demand for affordable housing, the bill aims to set up our wholesale change and to find resources for the CLTC in order to continue with the mission of land restoration for the 8,000-plus applicants who've been on the waiting list for 30 years and for the new generation of people of Guam who are in great need of affordable housing. For the record, the committee requested feedback on Bill 278-36 from the Director of Administration, who sent his regrets but committed to providing written testimony to the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, and I think we have a fiscal note from them now, to, of course, the Chamor Land Trust Commission. We'll now receive testimony on Bill 278-36. We'll begin with the Chamor Land Trust Commission, and I believe that we have with us today the President of the Acting Chairman, Chairperson of the Board, Angela Santos, and our Acting Director, Angela Camacho, and we have -- so those are from the Chamor Land Trust. We allow you to begin.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for having us here. Buenas en half a day, Honorable Chairman, Chairwoman, on land, Speaker Terlahe, and honorable senators who are present. I do want to add that the testimony that I will be providing is for both bills.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. The testimony I'll be providing is for both bills.
Okay. Well, all right. Can you just limit your testimony right now to the Infrastructure Fund? Does the Chamor Land Trust have any objection to the establishment of these additional uses of the Survey and Infrastructure Fund?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
We are in support.
Okay. Appreciate that. I'm going to -- trying to find the fiscal note. I'm sorry, I'll have to get that later. If we could get the fiscal note that was submitted by BBMR just recently. All right. Is there anyone else who wants to submit testimony on Bill Number 278? All right. If not, then Chamor Land Trust, you can proceed. Well, if I could introduce Bill 277 then, and then you could provide testimony on both. Okay. So the second item on the agenda -- well, I'm sorry. Here, here's the excerpts from the fiscal note from BBMR on Bill 278 states that the amendment allows for the revenues from the landing annual license fees, fines, and interest from the commercial land agreements to be deposited into the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. The amendment also includes sewer and telecommunications resources as types of construction allowed on CLTC residential and agricultural tracts of land. Per correspondence with the CLTC, the additional revenue source will increase the fund balance, allowing the department to complete the mandates by law related to the fund's creation. As noted in the fiscal note for Bill 277, the Bureau estimates a fiscal impact of $3,083,030 in revenue over a 25-year period. I'd like to note for the record that this estimate from BBMR only accounts for the landing and license fee for a single cable for 25 years. They accounted for a $600,000 landing fee and license fee for 25 years, starting at $100,000 with a 2% annual escalation. Bill 277 allows for up to six cables per license, and the potential is six times of what is estimated by BBMR in the fiscal note for just a single lease, and we will discuss I think this is a note by my staff, so I apologize for that last remark. All right. So the second agenda item is Bill Number 277-36COR. As the primary sponsor, I will just very briefly introduce this bill. Recently, in August of 2021, the legislature passed Bill 3636, which is now known as Public Law 3646, authorizing a commercial submerged land license agreement between the Chamor Land Trust Commission and GTA for the purpose of landing submarine cables at Elupeng. Government of Guam currently does not have a uniform policy to govern the leasing of submerged lands for the purposes of submarine cables, nor a plan for taking advantage of the placement of these cables to diversify industry and economic investment responsibly and fairly. Bills 277-36 proposes to remedy this. GIDEA committed to draft an outline for a white paper which would at least be the narrative for a grant application to fund a feasibility study in accordance with Public Law 35-132. The interest in submerged lands continues and must be addressed swiftly. We're looking forward to testimony from GIDEA today, who I believe has submitted something in writing right immediately prior to this hearing. And so in addition, existing license agreements are expiring, requiring renegotiation, while several companies and consortiums have also expressed an interest to construct additional fiber-optic cable systems. This will benefit Guam residents and businesses by creating more connectivity and a more robust infrastructure to support modern commerce. It's our intention to create a baseline and standard for license agreements specifically to land cables and submerged lands on Guam moving forward. The standard, we are hoping, is more in line with the global market meant to protect the people of Guam and beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust from undervalued license agreements, which were in place prior to this measure. We've carried forward these standards in Bill 277, the Guam Undersea Access for Homes Act, or GUAA, which include a baseline of $100,000 in landing fees for new cable landings and $100,000 in license fees with a 2% escalation per cable per year, with terms of 25 years and two five-year options, which was calculated to reflect the average lifespan of cables, which is approximately 25 years. The fees generated from these submerged land license agreements would go toward the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. Requirements for approvals and permits as required by the U.S. federal and local laws, including permitting, application review, and approval from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for work in U.S. waters, the Guam Coastal Management Program Consistency Certification in accordance with the Coastal Zone Management Act of 1972, and the Guam Territorial Seashore Protection Commission pursuant to the Guam Territorial Seashore Protection Act of 1974 for work within the seashore reserve, Guam's Environmental Protection Agency, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, National Marine Fisheries Service. All of those would be required to -- this bill is not intended in any way to affect the necessary approvals and permits from those agencies. General provisions for licensing, including applicable requirements from the CLTC Commercial Licensing Statute, are addressed here. So there is an existing commercial licensing law for the Chamor Land Trust, but we are kind of recodifying by this bill a set of standards specifically for submerged lands, All right. For the record, the committee has requested feedback on Bill 277 from Chamor Land Trust, of course, the Department of Land Management, the Guam Land Use Commission, Guam Economic Development Authority, Guam Coastal Management Program Bureau Statistics and Plans, from the technology companies, including DOCOMO Pacific, GTA TeleGuam, Tata Communications, ITNE, PTI Pacifica Inc., DBA, ITNE, Pacific Data Systems, RTA Cable. We got these names pretty much from those who had testified on the last bill that we considered with a similar topic, and the committee will now receive testimony on Bill Number 277-36COR. All right. We'll begin with Chamor Land Trust Commission.
Sign Amasi, Madam Chair. Buenas en half a day, Honorable Chairwoman on land, Speaker Terlahe, and all honorable senators present today at this public hearing. On behalf of each Commission in angok kun tano zamoru, we would like to extend our sincere gratitude for allowing us to provide oral testimony concerning Bills 277-36COR, to be known as the Guam Undersea Access for Home Act, GUAA, and Bill 278-36COR, an act to amend subsection 75A 124 of Chapter 75A Title 21, Guam Code Annotated. Gualasi Angela Santos, Commission Member on the Land Trust Commission, Sisus Massey again. In 1975, the Chamor Land Trust Act was created through the enactment of Public Law 12-226 and codified as Chapter 75 of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated. The act created a land restoration program meant to address the unjust taking of Chamor homelands by the United States federal government from 1898 to 1968. The act authorized the Chamor Land Trust Commission to issue residential and agricultural land leases in response to the unjust taking. With the most recent enactment of Public Law 35-112, CLTC's eligible criteria expanded to allow CLTC's programs' eligible beneficiaries to include individuals and their descendants who owned, occupied, ranched, or farmed lands that were taken. This would allow original landowners and their descendants, who will never realize the benefit of their returned land, to qualify as eligible beneficiaries for CLTC's land leasing programs. The introduced measures provides guidelines of the use of unused submerged lands, streamlining the process to be included in statute, providing support to the trust so we can in turn provide needed infrastructures and surveys so agricultural and residential lands are ready to be used as intended, providing basic infrastructure needs to lease properties. The CLTC understands the importance of staying connected in a time where technology is the most efficient source. Guam will serve as the hub in the Pacific for the undersea cable industry, connecting us to the world, benefiting us as a whole. Both bills solidifies the support of the 36 Guam Legislature to ensure that the intention of the Chamor Land Trust's programs are successful, honoring the hard work, time, tears, and dedication put in by those who have passed on, in particular Senator Paul J. Bordalio, Senator Angel Santos, and Senator Ben Pangolinan. CLTC is in full support of the intentions of Bills 277-36COR and Bill 278-36COR. Sign Amasi, Madam Chair.
Sign Amasi. Is there any other testimony from Chamor Land Trust?
It's a collaborative testimony. Thank you. To include myself.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now hear from -- we have with us the Director of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, Mr. Birch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have my chairman, Ron Iclavea, and vice-chair Ron Leguanyah outside, who want to speak on the same issue. But thank you, Speaker Terlahe, Senator Nelson, Senator Perez, and Senator Tytegui, and Senator Brown. The Guam Incestral Lands Commission on Bill 277-36COR has a concern that may not have been considered during the drafting of the bill, an act to add in a new article to Chapter 75A of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Chamor Land Trust Commission to enter into commercial submerged lands license agreements and to be known as the Guam Undersea Access for Homes Act. Bill Number 277-36COR creates an issue with the ownership status of the submerged land offshore from the AT&amp;T Corporation with which Guam Incestral Lands Commission has a lease agreement. The property in question is still under federal control and is listed as a potential return under U.S. Public Law 106-504. Should this property be returned, it will fall under the jurisdiction of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, but should this bill become law, all the lease proceeds from the property will go to the Chamor Land Trust Commission. The lease covers AT&amp;T's continued use of Guam Incestral Lands Commission's 42,678-square-foot building, together with real property, which is Lot 10192 in the municipality of Deirdre, consisting of a net area of 11,724 square meters, known as the Tenghisin Cable Landing Station. Currently, the submerged land easement leading to the Tenghisin Cable Landing Station is not a part of the lease agreement. It is anticipated that this property may be returned anytime between this year and the year 2026. Public Law 2545, Section 5B mandates, "Any land acquired by the government by having been declared excess by the U.S. government or any agency thereof after the effective date of this chapter shall acquire the status of ancestral land and be reserved by the Director of the Department of Land Management for the extinguishment of ancestral land claims. All such lands shall be described, surveyed, and mapped, and that information shall be sent to the Guam Incestral Lands Commission to be recorded in the Excess Lands Registry." At the Guam Incestral Lands Commission March 23, 2022 regular meeting, legal counsel, and that's Assistant Attorney General Nicholas Tough, agreed with the Commission's assessment that Public Law 2545 does not differentiate between submerged land and terrestrial land, that the Guam Incestral Lands Commission will have jurisdiction over the submerged lands in the area where the AT&amp;T submerged cables are located should the property be returned, that the claim of jurisdiction quoted in Section 75A 202 under legislative intent of Bill 277-36COR cites an informational memo from the Attorney General of Guam that was issued in 1996, which does not take into consideration that law that created the Guam Incestral Lands in 1999. So the Guam Incestral Lands Commission has vested interest in this issue because of our current lease with the AT&amp;T Corporation and the potential revenues that would be generated for the land bank should the submerged lands be returned. On behalf of the Commission, we look forward to working with you to resolve this issue. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. I just want to clarify that the bill in no way affects any other type of land except for submerged lands, so it will not affect landing stations directly, and also regardless of the stated intent of the bill and the citations that you -- I acknowledge that there may be a dispute as to who is the owner of any potentially returned lands. However, the bill is very clearly stated to authorize Chamor Land Trust to enter into commercial submerged land license agreements for submerged land under its jurisdiction for the purpose of construction installation. So the jurisdiction has to be under Chamor Land Trust, or this bill's not going to affect it. And so that's -- I do want to make that very clear. I do not want anybody going out and, you know, misunderstanding that, that this bill affects any other land except for submerged lands under the jurisdiction of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. If it's under your jurisdiction, this bill should not affect that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
I was informed in February, and we did make contact, that AT&amp;T -- well, Chamor Land Trust Commission was going to contact and send a letter to AT&amp;T to start negotiating lease proceeds for the submerged lands in the Tenghisin area, and I do have that as a fact. I'm aware of that.
Well, that's probably an issue that you all will have to address, and it's curious that you have the same counsel for both agencies if there's a conflict like that. But, all right. I appreciate your testimony, and we will, of course, take that into consideration.
Yes. As long as that can be exempted from the bill, we have no problem with it.
The bill is only touching land under the jurisdiction of the Chamor Land Trust, so the other disputes that you might have have to be resolved outside of this bill. Yes. So -- but we will -- if you could remain, my colleagues might also have questions.
Yes. I'm open for all questions.
Thank you.
I'll remain. Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I know we have with us the -- Mr. Edwin Rages, who's the Coastal Management Zone Director for the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Mr. Rages. Or if you could more properly state your title.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you also for the invitation to provide testimony at this hearing. Honorable Senator Perez, Senator Nelson, Senator Brown, and Senator Tytegui, thank you for the opportunity to present to you. As Madam Speaker mentioned, my name is Edwin Rages. I'm the Administrator for the Guam Coastal Management Program under the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and we are responsible for the land and natural resource planning of the Bureau, and we are also stewards of the features of the Coastal Zone Management Act as we develop our project to execute the authorities under that act. And specifically, the bill mentions federal consistency, and my comments today will really try to speak to advancing good policy, and I'm hoping that I can go through -- I have about eight different sections where I'm going to suggest amendments that would allow us to better interpret and execute our different planning functions. And I'll end my presentation with an overview of how we plan to execute the other element of the bill which we interface, which is this plan recommendation or citing recommendations for future cable landings. If acceptable, Madam Speaker, I can proceed.
Yes. I would ask it just to be as quick as possible. Thank you.
Okay. So my first recommendation on page three, line 19, would be where it says permits, and I would add "and" or "concurrents," because federal consistency, we provide concurrents. We don't provide permits. Under line 22, after the word "program," I would add the word "federal," then "consistency," delete the word "certification," and add the word "requirements." Page four, line 18, after the word "and approvals allow," period, I would add -- I'd suggest that we put a statement that reads, "Cut and cover methods on the reef crest and for reef is discouraged." Under page 14, line 21, I would recommend deleting the word "underground." Page five, line 26, I would delete the word "approval."
I'm sorry, Mr. Rages. Did you say page 14, line one?
Page 14. Page five, line 26.
The prior?
Oh, the prior would be page four. Page four, line 21. I would delete the word underground.
Do you have this in testimony in writing?
No, ma'am. But I can email this punch list to you. I have about three more, and then I'll go on to the later part of my testimony. Under, on page five, where it says approve, approval, I would change that to concurrence.
What line?
Line 26. I would add the word concurrence, and I would change that throughout the document. It actually is repetitive. Okay, so last three, page 10, line 20, I would delete the word continuing, and I would suggest adding the word unrestricted right. I would delete the words reef flat and the waters above, and add the words seafloor, water column, and sea surface. On page 10, line 22, after the words recreational purposes, I would add the words anchoring or any destructive activities to the lease's infrastructure is prohibited. And the last amendment I would recommend is on page 16, line seven, add 5 GCA, Chapter 1, Article 2, Central Planning. And this speaks to the Bureau of Planning's mandate for central planning, which allows us to provide strong, we have strong coordination authorities, as well as allows for public participation. I'll move on to the second part of my testimony. If I can ask the PowerPoint be brought up? It's just three slides.
Please proceed.
So in the bill, they require the Guam Coastal Management Program to provide citing recommendations, and we propose to do this by coordinating a land summit. And the first phase in the land summit would be to gather data. And so there's various products that we can use in various publications and scientific data that we can pull. As you may know, we are working closely with the Army Corps of Engineers, who produce the Guam Shoreline Atlas. And this is a tool that we use to characterize the shoreline profile and the different infrastructure. So certainly, when you're looking at cable landings, what, knowing, understanding what's in the shore, what's in the beach, is important to, for citing considerations. Next slide, please. We also want to look at the bathymetry and the benthic habitat. And so we're gonna, we looked at, we're going to be pulling in the University of Guam Coastal Atlas. And this is important because it gives us an understanding of the different makeup of the seafloor. Ideally, you want to try to lay the cables where you're going to cause the least destructive environmental harm. And in this map, one of the things I can point out is the loose unconsolidated material, which is this orange, that orange polygon there. And if you, if you look at this, you can see patterns where there is great potential for coral avoidance. And so this, these are some of the different considerations that we'll be looking at in terms of proffering cable landings. Last slide, please, to end my testimony. And so the summit will, this is just a draft outline, but we will go through an exercise where we'll look at plan alignment to ensure that the cable landings are consistent with existing plans. So some of the plans out there are the recreational water use management plan, the seashore reserve plan, and the fisheries management plan. And ideally, we want to be sure that we minimize or avoid any use conflicts. We'll go through a ranking assessment, which will identify high value, natural resources or avoidance areas. We want to assess impacts to ecosystem functions or recreational functions. And we'll provide the Chamor Land Trust with the citing and policy recommendations. We'll certainly have the authorities to bring people together. This is one of the reasons why we can lean on the Bureau's central planning mandates and access our ability to bring, to coordinate with other government agencies. And to end, we'll be able to meet the requirements of the legis, of this law as it pertains to the Guam Coastal Management Program. This concludes my testimony, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for submitting copies. We have shared this with our, my colleagues. I also like to recognize the president, the presence of Senator Sabina Perez. Thank you, Senator Perez. And Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, Senators, for being present. And thank you. All right, I think we are, we're going to, we can go now to Dan Tai Dinko, GTA.
Hafedeh, good afternoon, Madam Speaker and Senators. On behalf of TeleGuam Holdings LLC DBA GTA, I'm Daniel Tai Dinko, Executive Vice President. We're grateful for the invitation and opportunity to testify on this measure. As the only local telecom entity on island that has endeavored in the submarine cable licensing and permitting process, as well as in the construction of cable systems, cable landing stations, and a data center, we're a bit uniquely qualified to comment on this legislation. Just last year, this body, after exhaustive and extensive review, ultimately voted to pass legislation introduced by Senator Justin Augustine. The good Senator championed that submerged license agreement for our Lupang project that is currently underway. We're very heartened to see that the legislature is standardizing and making a template for all future submerged license agreements, essentially based on several elements of that Lupang legislation. That objective in and of itself should be lauded and commended. After frustratingly, frustratingly ping-ponging back and forth between the Chamor Land Trust and the legislature for almost two years in trying to secure a submerged license agreement for the much-needed new submarine cable systems, we were ultimately glad to have that legislation passed. With this bill today, we're pleased to see the legislature authorize the Chamor Land Trust Commission to enter these long-term submerged license agreements and not subject would-be applicants to have to secure such agreements legislatively. Further, we note that the landing and licensing fee schedule mirrors what we have been mandated to pay in our legislatively approved license agreement for Lupang. It suggested that language be included in this measure to specifically apply this schedule to not only new cable operators or applicants seeking to secure license, but also existing cable system owners or licensees who are seeking to reterm or renew their existing agreements. During the public hearing on Senator Justin Augustine's bill for us, other telecoms testified that they wanted parity and what's best for the community. We agree. If they have cable licenses that have to be renewed or returned, then the schedule herein, which was approved by the legislature last August, should apply. An additional amendment which the committee should seriously-
I'm sorry, Mr. Tai Dinko, I missed that last part. Can you just repeat the last couple of sentences?
Yeah, I'll just start back. It suggested that language be included to specifically apply this schedule to not only new cable operators or applicants seeking to secure license, but also existing cable system owners or licensees seeking to reterm or renew their existing agreements. During the public hearing on Senator Justin Augustine's bill for us last year, other telecoms testified very vociferously at our bill in our public hearing that they wanted parity and what's best for the community. We agree. If they have cable licenses now that have to be renewed or returned, as in what Mr. Birch was noting down the end on, down to Gisian, I believe, then the schedule herein that was applied to us should apply to them. An additional amendment, which the committee should seriously take into account, is recognize that a cable system should be defined clearly with a double-ended cable as a single cable system. We do not want to unintentionally end up being the most expensive place to land a cable, which lands, energizes as it lands, and continues out again. There should not be a double charge here. Physics and the engineering, based on the geography here, necessitate the double-ended nature of the cable system that traverses in and out of the island. Other jurisdictions in the region are seeking to attract and offer incentives and tax holidays to license, build, and land in their islands. We look to remain home and aren't seeking any such incentives. We don't mind paying our fair share. However, we urge the legislature not to price the systems out of market. This amendment should also be seriously considered for definitional purposes, as it is giving pause to some interested licensees. On the non-exclusivity and non-interference section, we believe language should be included to require permitting clearances and engineering reports to ensure there is no interference with facilities already licensed. The sole discretion accorded to the Chamor Land Trust Commission to determine non-interference has to be founded in fat and backed by fact and data, which would not adversely impact a licensee's existing infrastructure. Aside from these suggestions, I'd like to thank you, Madam Speaker, and Senator Justin Augustine, for ushering our Lupang legislation, and for you with this legislation for making a uniform submerged license template an agreement to use based on that law. This is good legislation and benefits the community and may attract more industry here with some modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tai Dinko. If you're able to stay for a while.
Sure.
All right, thank you. And we'll hear now from Representative Dokomo, Mr. Roderick Boss.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, honorable senators. It's a pleasure to provide testimony today on this bill. This bill observes that Guam does not have a uniform policy to govern the leasing of submerged lands for the purposes of submarine cables, nor a plan for taking advantage for the placement of these cables to diversify industry and economic investment fairly. The bill seeks to put in place a regulatory framework to update previous cable license agreements entered into by the government of Guam to bring all telecommunications agreements in line with the global market. More specifically, the bill proposes individual landing fees of $100,000 per cable for the privilege of landing on Guam. Dokomo Pacific is happy to support the bill if the following amendments are considered and adopted. Guam is currently the landing point for at least 11 submarine cable systems. Only two of these systems are owned and operated by local carriers. The remaining landings are part of larger regional or international undersea networks. Although the bill cites a need to update previous cable license agreements entered into by the government of Guam to bring all telecommunications in line with the global market, it is unclear whether the proposed licensing fee structure would apply exclusively to future builds or would also retroactively apply to existing submarine cable infrastructure. Deepak believes that existing systems ought to be explicitly exempted from any additional fee requirements. As this was not part of the initial business case for landing the cables in Guam, it would represent a significant burden to current operators. The decision to build a submarine fiber-optic cable system is complex and sensitive to a wide variety of factors, chief among them, location and cost. While the efforts of the Guam Legislature to secure a portion of revenues associated with such projects is understandable, is equally important to achieve a careful balance between collecting revenues and discouraging companies from landing their submarine cable systems on Guam, as opposed to other locations that might not impose such fees or offer a more favorable fee structure. Contrary to Mr. Tai Dinko's testimony that GTA was the only company that has experienced landing a cable, in 2017, Deepak built its own inter-island submarine cable between Guam and CNMI. Under CNMI law, Deepak is required to pay a submerged lands fee to the CNMI Department of Land and Natural Resources for physically landing its Ateza submarine cable system in Onroda, Tinian, and Saipan. The annual fee of $60,000 is set by statute and remains fixed for 25 years. Deepak also currently pays additional taxes and fees to the CNMI Department of Public Lands. We believe that any fees associated with landing a cable should differentiate between intra-island domestic systems, such as the cables connecting Guam with the Northern Mariana Islands, currently owned by Deepak and IT&amp;E, and larger international systems built and operated by huge global operators, such as Facebook or Google. In the case of smaller local or regional operators, the fee could be benchmarked to the CNMI $60,000 or less than that, so that we don't lose business to CNMI. Whereas larger international cable systems, for which Guam is primarily a means to connect with other global destinations as a waystation for power, they could be charged a higher amount. By doing so, the legislature could ensure that regional, smaller, local systems would not be dissuaded from continuing to invest in Guam, while larger systems with larger budgets would not be as proportionally impacted by higher landing fees. Finally, Deepak urges the legislature to adopt a truly equitable framework for all telecommunications providers and their future investments for improving the products and services available to the people of Guam. As stated above, the decision by private for-profit companies to commit to projects that can cost tens of millions of dollars are sensitive to a number of factors and highly competitive. While private companies can control the decision to expend their capital expense funds, the regulatory framework is largely out of their control and is susceptible to preferential treatment and other incentives that distort the marketplace. For example, a company should not be able to fast-track any regulatory approval process by offering special services or trades, like building a community center, a basketball court, or sponsoring a local sports team. In sum, the understandable desire on the part of the government of Guam and its agencies to ensure that a local island, the local island community retains benefits from the use of its land and waters under this bill should be carefully balanced by a legal and regulatory framework that ensures equitable treatment for all applicants, so as to make Guam increasingly attractive, an increasingly attractive destination for local and international telecommunications investment. In closing, Deepak is proud to serve the people of Guam and CNMI through its products, services, and infrastructure, including our Ateza submarine cable system. And we offer our support to this bill with our suggested improvements. We trust that these suggestions will be helpful to the legislature as it evaluates this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I believe your testimony has been provided in writing as well. Thank you, and it's been provided to my colleagues. All right, well, now here from, oh, if I could ask the government agencies, if you could please have a seat here? If you'd like to, I'd like you to continue to stay for questions, but I'd like to hear from all the companies. We now hear from RTI, Mr. Russ Matilich. I think this is a virtual testimony. Good afternoon.
Hafedeh Commissioners, can you hear me okay? Am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Okay, little bit of feedback. But allow me to introduce myself. I'm, shall I begin, or is there any?
Please proceed, yes. Please introduce yourself for the record, and please proceed.
Yep, Hafedeh Commissioners, Speaker Tarlahe, Senator Perez, Senator Tai Twage. Apologize for that. Senator Nelson, Senator Brown, and to the Chamor people. My name is Russ Matilich. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of RTI Cables, and I'm grateful that you've allowed us to speak today on this bill and then also on submarine cables. So I've sent through, Madam Speaker, I've sent through some materials, a letter, presentation, and our notes. But is it okay if I just speak colloquially about subsea cables? Because I think in all of this rhetoric and discussion, the actual utility of the cable gets lost. So may I just speak for a few moments on that?
Please proceed.
The importance of critical infrastructure cannot be- The importance of critical infrastructure cannot be understated. And when I say critical infrastructure or subsea cables, I'm speaking of the very essence of what we need to survive each day: trade, education, communications, digital security. Those are the components that are delivered by way of critical infrastructure, and critical infrastructure is subsea cables. Subsea cables carry 99% of the world's internet, and most people think they're satellite, but it's not. It's undersea fiber optic cables. Now, in 2017, I was in Guam when the cable between Guam and Saipan was cut, and it was fairly extraordinary. I have some slides, and it might not be convenient to rifle through them, but you're welcome to look at them afterwards. But the impact was significant because at that time, there was only one cable between Guam and Saipan. When the cable went out, people that would go to the ATM machines to take out money, the ATM machines didn't work. When they went inside the bank, they did not have an account because there was no access to banking. The airport closed, emergency services closed, medical services closed, emergency services, police, ambulance, really, the economy shut down. It was the Stone Age. And that is the significance of what an undersea cable does and what it does not just for carrying internet searches between among islands and nations, but for everybody's daily living, because we live in a global community. So undersea fiber optic cables are very fabric of economic prosperity, and they cannot be understated or undervalued. Now, I agree with my colleague Rod Boss. I've known Rod for 15, 20 years. And I'd just like to read one paragraph out of my endorsement of the bill. So allow me to do that. This is on page three of my letter, I believe, and it's about three-quarters of the way down. And it reads as follows: "RTI speaks about international cables only. For regional cables, we believe that the cost structure should foster growth as some island nations have limited connectivity, and subsea cables are material for the health and stability of any economy. Where possible, consider minimizing fees and prioritize laying the digital foundation for each island nation." And we've always believed that. And those who have worked closely with us know that for the last two decades, that's what RTI and our group of cable experts has done. Now, before working for the suppliers that sold cables to the big companies, after that, we started a company called RTI, and we landed cables in Guam. In fact, you haven't heard a lot about us because we usually take the backseat to everybody else's publicity. But if there's any company that's eminently qualified to speak on cables that land in Guam, it's RTI. Let's discuss the last three cables that have landed in Guam. JGA North, 2,700-kilometer cable, roughly $75 million, landed in 2020 and now operates and carries multiple terabits of traffic. JGA South, by the way, JGA North is 100% owned by RTI. JGA South, which is 62.5% owned by RTI, connects Guam to Sydney and also a new location called the Sunshine Coast. That connected and landed in 2020. The CUS Cable System, Southeast Asia United States Cable System, RTI is the largest investor between Guam, Hawaii, and California, and that landed in 2017. And if you go through the last decade, how many new cables have landed in Guam the last decade? A total of zero outside of the three that I just mentioned. The combined investment that RTI has thus far for cables built is $350 million, and we plan to build more. But geopolitical issues and other issues are limiting our ability to deliver those cables in a timely manner. So we feel privileged that we're welcome on Guam, and we've had outstanding sessions with the government, both local, state, federal, and various island nations throughout CNMI. And we understand what cables, the power of cables, what they could do. We are absolutely not looking for a bargain or special privilege. What we're looking to do is collaborate and be transparent, which is the essence of how we operate. That's how a small cable like us has been able to deliver half of the cables across the Pacific in the last 10 years. We're nobody compared to the giant companies with trillion-dollar balance sheets, yet we're able to build half the cables across the Pacific over the last 10 years. And the reason is not just the subject matter experts that look after the company day-to-day. It's a small number of us. But really, it's by collaborating with the local governments. To land a cable in foreign countries, you have to be able to blend in. But there's no secret. The secret recipe is communication, collaboration, and transparency. So we're happy to make our contributions either retroactively or going forward, whatever's in the best interest of the cables. So, Madam Speaker, I don't have much else to cover other than fully endorsing what the Guam Legislature is doing. We support any type of critical infrastructure based on what we know to be the case, that cables bring prosperity and no economy can survive without them. We think Guam is uniquely qualified. In fact, before Guam, before the last 10 years, Guam already landed $3 billion of cables. And then there was a dearth of building for 10 years because Guam wasn't seen as strategic. But we knew it was strategic geographically, geopolitically, rule of law, and infrastructure. And so we made those investments, not because we thought it was a good bet, but we understood that Guam had infrastructure and rule of law. We could go to Australia, to Asia, to Southeast Asia, to North Asia, and be able to interconnect other cables. Now, there has to be a more diverse economy than the main economies that attract revenue for Guam, which I believe to be tourism and federal investment and other smaller services. And that can be accomplished. While giant data centers on Guam may not make sense, it does make sense to put smaller edge network data centers that are responsibly run, owned, and managed. And we'd like to discuss that at the right point in time. But I think I'll close, Madam Speaker, and happy to take questions afterwards. Really, in closing, saying we're just grateful for the time that we spent with the leadership on Guam, and we look forward to building what we hope will be the next three cables that land on Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matelich. We now hear from John Day from PDS. I believe that is also virtual?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and the other senators in attendance, Senator Tai DeGui, Senator Brown, Senator Perez. And I'm sorry if I missed anybody else there because I can't quite tell who else is there. But I appreciate this opportunity to submit testimony on the part of Pacific Data Systems. Just to give you a little background on me, my name is John Day. I'm the president of Pacific Data Systems, which is a local telecommunications company and IT supplier that's been operating on Guam since 1969. I've been working for PDS for the last 45 years and been the president for PDS since 2002. And during my time, PDS has utilized many of the existing submarine cables that land on Guam. And I can speak from the knowledge that we've gained from that experience. I think our first submarine cable connections went back to 1997. And when we were actual owners in some of those cables, these are consortiums, so we were a small owner, but we were still involved in the development, installation of those cables into Guam. I'm appearing remotely today to testify and support a bill 277-36. This bill ensures that the people of Guam will be fairly compensated for submerged lands used by new and existing submarine cable systems landing in Guam. I don't think it's any secret that some of the existing... Prior to the recent bill that was passed by this legislature, the government has not benefited significantly from undersea land leases that have been provided to cable companies in the past. And I think the legislature's done a good job in recognizing this issue and then coming up with this bill that establishes a standardized template. Because I do believe some of the delays that GTA experienced in their permitting of their new landing would have been prevented by this type of legislation. And it's a good move. It's a good move all the way around for the industry and also for the government to have this kind of a standardized template where all the terms and all the costs are clearly articulated. I also think that some of the suggestions made by Dokomo have merit, particularly when it comes to regional cables that are of a limited distance. Maybe a cable that's less than 500 miles in length or something like that might be given a different tariff rate or price list that could be utilized. Certainly, Guam is closely linked to surrounding islands. I think right now, today, Guam is linked to most Micronesian islands through existing cables. And, you know, those cables, I think, should be supported in some way in the legislation. You know, I'm not really sure exactly how that can be done, but certainly, I think that suggestion has merit. But, you know, as RTI has just mentioned, Guam's close proximity to Asia and our relationship with the United States makes Guam an ideal location for landing fiber optic cables connecting Asia to the United States mainland. The United States mainland continues to be the main interconnection point for the internet. And there's a tremendous amount of traffic moving between Asia and the U.S. mainland. This bill establishes a fair terms and compensation for the use of Guam's submerged lands for these purposes and includes coverage for new and existing cable networks. I think the bill, once fully implemented, will provide an excellent source of new, long-term government revenues that can be used by the Tomorrowland Trust Commission to support development of its land trust to the benefit of the people of Guam. Again, these leases are going to be of a 25-year term, which provides the CLTC with lots of abilities to leverage that cash flow for major financing to the capital projects that they need to undertake. I appreciate this time to come before the legislature and provide this testimony, and I'm available to answer any additional questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Day. We'll now hear from... I'm sorry, if you could introduce yourself. Mr... Are you Mr. Carrara? Yeah, ITNE. Looks like we have Steve Carrara and Jim DeHeling. Who's here? Oler King, yes, okay. All right, if you could please turn on your microphone and introduce yourself for the record. So now, this is representatives from ITNE.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and senators. My name is Jim Oler King. I'm CEO of PTI Pacifica, doing business as ITNE on Guam. I'll be brief because we're in support of the legislation. We think the structure and framework will streamline the process, bring in additional revenues for the Tomorrowland Trust, and also make Guam more appealing for the cable landings with the trans-Pacific cables arriving. We're also in support of the recommended modifications looking at local cable infrastructure connecting islands in Micronesia for further regional development and the somewhat limited marketplace that that represents. But it is critical for the regional development for education, health, and welfare, and overall connectivity. And we feel that that needs to be, continue to be amplified as much as possible. But again, we are in support of the legislation, and we feel that it provides a level playing field for everyone and streamlines the process for the arrival of new cables and the economic development and benefits that that brings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oler King. Anyone else from ITNE? Okay. We also have Mr. Ed Camacho from GIDA.
Hafaday, Madam Speaker, Talai, and members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. And Hafaday, Senator Perez, Senator Nelson, Senator Brown, and Senator Tai DeGui. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the Guam Economic Development Authority in regards to Bill 277-36. Bill 277 proposes to authorize the Tomorrowland Trust Commission to negotiate and enter into commercial submerged land lease agreements for telecommunications infrastructure, more specifically, undersea cables. As you may know, GIDA serves as the presiding officer for the Task Force on Submarine Cables established under public law 35-132. The Task Force has been actively conducting research and preparing a white paper on the opportunities and requirements regarding investments in submarine cables on Guam. Preliminary research indicates that through the investment of submarine cables, Guam can grow and stimulate its economy, promote workforce development, and improve Guam's infrastructure. Additionally, Guam's geographic position between Americas and Asia makes for an ideal location to serve as a telecommunications hub in the Asia-Pacific region. In general, GIDA supports investments that can lead to more opportunities for the people of Guam. As such, we continue to dedicate internal resources to the Task Force to finalize the white paper in order to help provide guidance to GIDA and the government of Guam as a whole with regards to the potential economic opportunities additional submarine cables can provide to Guam. We are currently reviewing and revising the first draft of the paper and anticipate a more complete draft to be provided by the Task Force in May. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this measure for you today. Thank you very much. And we are in the process of reviewing a draft of this white paper that we are working with the University of Guam on for submarine cables.
All right, thank you. My staff can just confirm if we've heard... I think there are two more members of the Ancestral Lands Commission who want to speak. Is there anyone else? Or if not, then we could have those two members. We could put one additional chair. I'd like them to testify right away. If you could all remain seated. And... Or actually, Mr. Camacho. We could put Mr. Camacho with the government agencies, and we will have the two testify right there. That'll be fine. Would you like to provide additional testimony to the director's testimony? If so, please be seated, yes? Pardon? If so, please be seated and state your name for the record. I know we have the chairperson of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, Mr. Rana Clavea, and one of the Ancestral Lands Commission board members, Mr. Ron Leguany. Mr. Clavea, please proceed.
Buenas, Madam Speaker and senators. I'm the chairman of the Ancestral Lands Commission. My name is Rana Clavea. And I'm here with the director, of course, and our vice chair, Ron Leguany. We have a lot of discussions regarding the bill, and we're actually very concerned about the possible outcome of some of the language in the bill. Although you did clarify that the lands or the submerged lands that fall under the CLTC jurisdiction. We've been having some conflict in a lot of our discussions and even some emails with our legal counsel having differing opinions stating that CLTC would actually own the submerged lands, and then later on saying, "We actually own the submerged lands." And there's a conflict because the language of... of the issue with the enabling legislation with the Ancestral Lands Commission, which was in 1999, and then the law in 1996. So our legal counsel wasn't really aware of the language in our enabling legislation that says all lands goes to ancestral lands. So we're concerned that somehow... So we're concerned that somehow there might be some mechanism in there that would transfer those potential excess lands, submerged lands, to the CLTC. That's what we're really concerned about. And I'll turn it over to my, to elaborate a little bit more. But we're thinking you could clarify that in this bill and make it clear because it's not really clear to some people. And we feel it belongs, all the lands that are excess goes to the Ancestral Lands Commission. And so the rights to submerged lands, the submerged lands should go to the Ancestral Lands Commission. Sisus Masie.
Sisus Masie. Mr. Leguany?
How are they? Maneluhu. Si Ronald Leguanyzo, bawi segundu gehilo. Ye komisioni tanu mananata. Za magai reziya sasangan i direktota. Unganinkomprendina legninya na idonia diretsu i hafashana tonu popudung gi Chamorland Trust. Lo, gi estina sectione gi mina sinku dan size. Za wa na bena klaru, so mana holun. Na esti lai publicu 2545. Ilisla shonimona guaham ni tanu mananata za ni komision. No annuk na todudu na tonu opudung gi Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Komusiniana holumezu konfortmiam. Sha kalan tikla klaru sa estaduru man clama i Chamorland Trust na membru sia. Estaduru man akuntusi za ni ATNT. Kalan estamanga akontrota na parama, fanakontrota na parama. Jangin masotatu na tonu edusia na tonu paramatzuli todo iginannan. Idipusi uginagana ni Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Pes komuna klaru gi negi lai predeponi. Na u annuk na ilai publicu 2544 u fitmi. Na sumaga enosia na tonu gi Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Edza pa be, sa kalan edzit kalan na tigof klaru ne, za ti mana fana na za ni direktotomi. Para u niksplika. Za aneduru komentusam na cheeski huzung kalan man inkubukau. Za pes ni hingok na mane entalu i Guam, I mean, i Chamorland Trust Commission ni para u fanakontrota za ni ATNT. Estai ATNT mani hitamona mangagana salapi gi ninatkeletnia. Para i man samoru sia ni tipu omali totita nu niya. Edzu na salapi debidio honogatu gi Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Pes na siguru na guagenau lingwahi na holungui na ti umapatsa. Edusia na tonu u honogatu gi i komisioni tanu mananata. Komusinian konsidera nau, sa kalan pabu sinora tiklaru. Sa sinia zu masotatu na tonu, pes monana agatu gi Chamorland Trust Commission. Edza nagaiyam gini? Pes unrepresentantaha i interesi imanautauta. Sa edzi land trust ne Chamorland Trust, man nanai huzung tonu. Lo esti Guam Ancestral Lands hagas ta nu niya i tau tauta. Pes kalan ta amut i hafashina taganna gi ninazu i ATNT. Unganapu fanentalu, zapu manai otu. Polu zo usaga gatu gi Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Sisus Masie, sinora, za angimaskoni na klaru i kuentusu. Estiga i direktot gini ni maulik zetotonya. Director John Birch utunahau, sa onsodas di na tiklaru. Pes esti loki zotagehilo klaru na mangaiyam pa binrepresenta iminaulik za ni dinanti. Na siguru na annuk na edzu na tonu edzi ilai publicu 2544. Edzu na tonu usaga gi Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Sisus Masie.
Sisus Masie. All right, so since that, is there a representative? From Tata? If the two of you could have a seat there or, yeah, please. All right, okay. So Mr. Birch? If I could get maybe one. Mr. Edwin, Mr. Rages? All right, so first of all, let me just address the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. I will, I'm going to ask some questions now and then I'm going to open it up for my colleagues. All right, and so if all of you can just remain for a few more minutes, I would appreciate that. So first of all, to the Ancestral Lands Commission, I very much appreciate your concerns. And I apologize if there is any confusion. So we will make the bill, when we amend it in committee, very clear. The bill is not intended at all to transfer any jurisdiction of land. It is only intended to affect the land that is within the jurisdiction of the Chamorland Trust Commission. So if there's any land that is going to be returned, that may come into your jurisdiction, this bill should not affect that. And I also hope that you continue that stance for all the potential returned lands. Because my understanding is that there is some kind of sentiment going around that the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission is saying, "We don't have to return lands anymore." And that we, that we're not going to give it to the landowners because the U.S. federal government says that we're not, we don't have to do that. So I just want to make that very clear. So I appreciate your, you know, standing up for your, for that. I expect that of the Commission, and I'm very glad that you are here to do that. And we will make it very clear. And again, just for those who are listening, I want to read again the provision. What they are reading is from the intent. And if we can strike the entire intent, it would not affect the actual provisions of the bill, which provide very clearly. The legislature authorizes Chamorland Trust to enter into commercial submerged land license agreements for submerged land under its jurisdiction for the purpose of construction, installation, operation, maintenance, and use of fiber optic cable telecommunications systems subject to the provisions of this act. So every provision of this act is to control the agreements made by the Chamorland Trust Commission. I would like to have a further discussion with ancestral lands as to whether these types of provisions for lands controlled by the ancestral lands would also be helpful to obtain good value. Or if you could pattern your agreements after this as well. But we are trying as well to establish a uniform policy for the government of Guam. And so we will enter into those discussions. Mr. Rages, I want to thank you for your testimony on behalf of the Coastal Management Program. And I want to point out that the bill provides that, you know, the Chamorland Trust will consult with you in particular to ensure that if we can come up with the least environmental impact from the bringing in of these cables or the landing of these cables, that we do that. And that you will make recommendations to this Chamorland Trust. And we hope that they will follow those wherever possible. And we know that the cable companies are required to get approvals, as you said, concurrences. And so we are very much trusting in that process to protect, you know, our fishing zones, our reefs as much as possible. And so we are very much relying on you. And so I'm very grateful that you took the time to, that you're on top of this, that you are providing us testimony and also going to be concurring with the Chamorland Trust. We make sure that that's a provision, and I really want to make sure that that's honored. All right, and so for all the companies that have testified, I'm very grateful. And I'm going to, first of all, I want to acknowledge that I did not consider regional tariffs or regional business, I guess. And that I will, we will, and we'll try to come up with something for that. But any language that you would like to submit relative to that, please submit that. I've not considered that at all. I'll lay that out right now. However, yes, as you know, we embarked on this because it was to our committee that the prior bill was referred. And of course, having jurisdiction of Chamorland Trust, we had seen just some kind of, some inconsistencies in the leases that we had. We really didn't, we were kind of, I thought that the government of Guam and the people of Guam could obtain more benefit from these leases. So I'm very glad to hear that you are, for the most part, in support of this type of legislation. So I'm very grateful for that. And I do accept all the suggestions for improvements to the bill. The bill, I believe, I agree that Guam is in a strategic location. And this, in this occasion, it's for, you know, landing of cables. I'm very proud of that. I'm very hopeful for that. We've tried to, in diversifying our economy, we've learned that, you know, the cables are so very important. Not only that, but the, what Guam has to offer is, we just celebrated Law Day today, and we're kicking off Law Month, and it's the rule of law. And that what we have here on Guam as a U.S. jurisdiction is that rule of law to govern all of your transactions and a stable environment in that regard. So, again, so I think we've heard some testimony. So the bill intends to set some fees and to allow the Chamorland Trust, with the help of the Bureau of Statistics and Plan, the Coastal Management Program, to agree to locations and to agree to prices as we have set these minimums. And we have also allowed them. We've also set a way for these prices to increase over time, right? Which I think, well, I'm glad that all of you seem to support that as well. I think... I guess I would just ask. I do intend that the bill affects leases that are coming up for expiration. Because as far as I'm concerned, those, when the agreements end, there was no intention after that that otherwise it would have been recorded in the lease. But those, I am expecting by this bill to also govern leases that have expired and have to be entered into anew by the Chamorland Trust Commission or the government of Guam. And so I'm hoping that where we are currently charging $5,000 a year or in that vicinity, that we are going to be able to start charging the $100,000 cable licensing fees for every, yeah, for each one. Yeah, or more depending on the year. And also, so I was just curious, though. We have a suggestion that the $100,000 landing fee, the one-time landing fee, is, it's a $100,000 that we put in this bill to start with escalation. However, yeah, we have some testimony that shows that, for example, RTI is paying one-time fees ranging from U.S. $500,000 to $1.25 million for the privilege of landing a cable. And I guess I'd like to get your input of the other companies on that, either today or in the future. I don't want to undervalue the privilege of landing a cable on Guam. So I'm going to open it now to my colleagues. Or if there's anyone who would like to say anything in response to what I've said. Mr. Boss?
Maybe I could just add to what I said in my comments. You know, our, I thank you for your willingness to accept, kind of to consider local or what I call domestic circuits between here and Saipan, particularly of interest to us. But I think to the rest of Micronesia, at some point, we could see that happening. We, you know, we're not familiar with those landing fees in California and some of these other places. And I think that we need to look at as a comparison to this region. What are the charges that are being done in Palau and, you know, other areas that could compete for cable landings, Saipan particularly. So I think that's why that reference point of $60,000 in Saipan is a reasonable rate. Because if we, if our rates in Guam become too high, people will stop in Saipan. I mean, Saipan could potentially compete with us for those landings. So I think that's something, a really important point to keep in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Look, to add, if that's possible.
Just one second, yes. If we could, okay, please proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe provide a little bit of background and also reiterate that I agree with the PAC in terms of the setting a foundation for, especially for regional entities, island nations, CNMI, and other territories, Yap and Palau. That's important at the basis, the foundation of the Internet and connectivity, onward connectivity to the rest of the world has to be set before. And, but that's Guam's business. And I was speaking in terms of those that range, half million to 1.25, somewhere around that. That is for international cables. And I made that clear in my letter. I just wanted to indicate that to the rest of the people here. And also mention that it's not intended to be a windfall. That fee, that one-time fee, and it is a privilege to land critical infrastructure on any soil. But that one-time fee is meant to be a collaborative effort with the local government because important things have to be done. Environmental evaluations need to be done, you know. How will soft coral be impacted? What is the best avenue to land a cable? You know, what types of indigenous things that do we need to take into consideration? You know, what are the U.S. military zones that need to be kept safe? You know, what is the extension of the territorial waters versus the 12 miles that might allow the federal government to help provide some guidance on how to land a cable? You know, all of those things take money to hire subject matter experts for a period of time. And they should work for the government. They should work collaboratively with those of us that land cables. And again, over the last decade, only three new cables have landed in Guam. And all three have been our RTI cables, where we're the largest investor or sole owner. So we are happy to contribute our intellectual capital, time, and other things that we can just to, you know, if it's of need to the Guam Legislature. So we just wanted to put that out there. Thank you for that, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now open it up to Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for every, thank you everyone for being here today. Perhaps this question is best suited for the Coastal Management BSP. How many international sea cables come through Guam?
So we've permitted about three sites. And the bulkheads there, they allow for additional cables to be landed into that same line. But I heard earlier in the testimony that there's 11 cable landings on Guam. I can only speak to the cables that we've reviewed so far, which are three areas to my knowledge.
So you're unaware of the 11 cable landings?
That's correct.
Where are the three sites located?
So Tempongan Channel in Aguetzuan. Temponga, no, that's, sorry, that's PD. There's... There's, um, the channel in Aggett, adjacent to the Spanish Bridge. And then we're all familiar with the Gun Beach Channel, Gun Beach Landing.
Tengisan?
And we heard of Tengisan Landing as well, too. So I, I think that inventorying the cable landing sites and providing the GIS files to create a, a database of landing sites would be useful so that we can have a complete inventory to guide the different locations and regulations around those cable landing sites. For our internal processes, we review them on a case-by-case basis, but we don't necessarily build a geospatial database to provide that information and catalog that information.
Thank you.
Senator, I can, apologies, I can provide some additional information if it's helpful.
Yes, please.
There are currently 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 cables that are active over the last 20 years in Guam. And there are another 1, 2, 3, 4 that are pending, future cables, of the ones that land on Guam. And this is in the back, this is attached to our written testimony in our presentation. You'll see all the cables across the Pacific. And it is actually of the, of the 20 cables across the Pacific, it's refreshing to see that are active. It's refreshing to see that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of them land in Guam. More this previous decade than now, but there are roughly $2 billion of cables that are, that are pending interconnection to Guam, and those are also at the back of, or one of the attachments that we've listed. The landing locations are in, that are preferred in Guam are Tengisan, PD, there's PD where Tates, and then PD where GTA is, and then Tumon Bay. Also, Aggett is, is a location where there's at least one cable, and there may be others. Those are for international cables. I can't quite speak to regional cables. But, but that, that's a number, Senator, for the, for the international cables. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there any information perhaps from any of the telecommunications representatives about what an equitable pricing would be for international cables? I know we brought it up already, and, but we're talking about international cables running through Guam, and then we had a gentleman speak about a $2 billion investment. So is, do you, do one of your businesses that you represent run these international cables? And how much revenue do the businesses receive through these international cables?
If that question, oh, sorry, that was to, to the ITN gentleman.
To, to the businesses that are here being represented?
Well, the RTI representative, I think, has much more experience. Again, we just are working with local cable landings, but also we, we purchase capacity on the existing cables, so we're not really involved currently in the landing of the international cables here.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Teng.
The, the basis and valuation which the Speaker and her staff had come up with during the legislation, Public Law 3646 regarding the Lu Peng GTA legislation, the basis and valuation was fair and equitable. It came up to, it was, it became up a multiple of 20 times more than what the local licensees were previously paying prior to that. And that was validated by certified, qualified appraisals of submerged properties, not only on Guam, but in comparable areas and comparable jurisdictions where cables land. So the valuation which the Speaker and their staff had done at present for the, for the 100K is fine for the single cable system. I was going to point something else out, but I just slipped my mind, and I'll come out, I, I think I'll come back to it. But I think the Speaker and her staff did a good job on getting that in, in place for the community and for the benefit of the Land Trusts.
And what was, since, since you brought it up, what was the, that Bill 36F36 which passed, what is the revenue that is projected within the next 25 years to receive for GTA?
Oh, for us? I can't, that, that has not been determined yet. It depends on what is sold. We're taking a risk and investment here, so.
So what is the, do you have a dollar?
And even if I, if I did know off the top of my head, I don't think I'd be in any position to disclose anything.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Is, I think, is there anyone else that would like to speak? In one of the testimonies, it was discussed about establishing minimum insurance coverage amounts. What exactly would minimum insurance categories would be explored? Is this environmental insurance? Do you guys see that in the bill where it talks about insurance? Do you know what the insurance that telecom agencies would utilize for this type of cable
I'm not, I'm not aware of anything in the bill about insurance, but we provide, we privately insure our networks and our, and our cables independently, and that's just through, through the market. So we don't have any, I don't think that's part of the legislation.
What, what insurance categories do you?
There, there's, there's a, there's a special category just for subsea cable.
And how much do you insure the cables for generally?
I don't, I don't have that information with me. Any of the other guys?
Does anyone here have that information for their own specific company that they
I can speak for how it, how it works for the industry, Senator, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
The, there are a few number of suppliers for international cables. Those companies are NEC from Japan, TE Subcom from the United States, and Alcatel from France. And, and typically, if not exclusively, those three suppliers, when they're installing cables, they carry the insurance. That is negotiated with each of the purchasers, and it, it varies. And the categories would, would be for, you know, causing some type of environmental damage, and not something catastrophic, of course, but maybe just the, the typical things that, that might happen on accident. So, so that's usually the supplier, if not, again, if not exclusively, and the insurance is fairly normal, and all of the suppliers carry it. I, I'll, I'll look to see if I can find a non-confidential copy, and if I do, if I can, I'll be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
Can, can I just clarify?
Sure.
In our case, our cable, a TESA cable that was built to Saipan, most recently in 2017, the NEC built that cable, and it is warranted, the cable itself is warranted, but if, in, in damage in a storm or something, the cable itself is not actually insured, the cable. The landings of the cable and our, our facilities that, that accommodate the cable are. So, you know, that is just a, a big risk point for anybody owning the cable themselves.
I mean, that's the way I read the statistics. It's more for just a liability protection for accidents as opposed to insurance on the cable.
Thank you. So we have GTA, DOCOMO, ITNE. Is there an AT&amp;T representative here? No? You know, this is a, this is a really, this is a really big bill. It's a big bill, but that's a big deal. Do any of your companies currently have international cables running through currently Guam, running through Guam currently? You can just raise your hand. Or do you facilitate?
Well, we just lease capacity on existing systems. We don't, our cables do not run internationally.
We're part of the CUS Consortium, Southeast Asia U.S. Consortium, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. And how many international cables is that? CUSE Consortium?
CUS, Southeast Asia U.S. Consortium.
Okay.
Consists of Telkom Indonesia, Globe out of the Philippines, GTA, Hawaiian Tel, and who's the other concern? I think it's RTI, if I'm not mistaken.
And then other, two other U.S. entities, GTI and Telkom USA. And yet, we were privileged to work with GTA and work with DAN on that cable. So, yeah, that was a very successful cable and continues to operate. And, you know, touch wood, between Guam, Hawaii, California, there's been no cuts on that cable. And I just would add, Senator, that, that the cables that lay at the, at the bottom of the ocean, as they come up, they're quite friendly to the, to the environment. They're not power cables, they're not giant like that. They're roughly the size, somewhere between the size of a half-dollar coin and a, and a dime coin. They're pretty unimpressive, actually, when you look at them, but what they do is extraordinary. But they're friendly to the environment.
RTI mentions in their testimony, one of the recommendations is to consider safety corridors. What would you, can you elaborate a little bit more on what you meant by safety corridors when it discusses the granting CLTC authority to restrict activities within a certain number of yards of a licensed area? What kind of activities do you recommend would be restricted?
Typically, typically governments, and I speak only about international cables, I don't know about regional cables or, or inter-island cables. But with international cables, the concerns are usually government operations. For example, if the U.S. Navy or the U.S. military were close by, then they would have their own area to be cordoned off, and that would be one area that would be a, a no build-through zone, if you want to call it that. The second would be fishing activities, fishing activities that, that are, actives that are, when fishermen catch fish, they also catch cables, so it's not a good thing to do. And typically, cables don't want to be in the way of fishermen. During installation, that's one thing, and fishermen get compensated for any economic loss during the installation time. But really, the point is, the fishermen should be, those fishing zones, if they're heavily fished, then it's not a good place to build cables anyway. So that'll be an exclusion zone, if you will. Another area might be environmental concerns. Let's say there's a very sensitive environmental or endangered species. Of course, no cable builder that knows what he or she is doing would, would dream of trying to build into an environmentally, you know, serious area. And there are also, in different places, there's hazardous waste dumps and, and things like that. But those are the major categories. And, and so what, what I was suggesting in my letter, which strongly supports what Guam's intentions are, is to maybe identify those. And, and if you have these exclusion zones, you can then maybe create a, a preferred zone. It's also important to let the market decide, too. So you have to kind of balance the, the zone that you're creating to make it easy and attract investment with other suggestions coming from people that know how to build cables, because they may want to build, for example, on the east coast of Guam, there's, there's no cables on that, on the west coast of Guam, sorry, no, east coast, there's no cables on that side, and, and maybe there are reasons for that. But it may, if somebody wants to take the risk, and there, none of those other concerns are there, then, then why not let them? So those are the main concerns, Senator. And, and, you know, not only does that help with organizing the cables that are coming through for security, national security, and also to make sure that there's some discipline to the process, but it, it will also help identify who's coming on shore. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you very much. I just have one more question, Madam Speaker, and then perhaps give our colleagues an opportunity. On, in your, in RTI's testimony, they talk about demand transparency, and I'm referencing your testimony because I do see DOCOMOs, but it clearly explains some of the things that they were recommending. So in RTI's testimony, Guam is among a handful of geographies with the ability, ability to host interconnect, interconnect subsea cables around three continents. The Saipan have that ability to, to perform or provide that kind of geographical ability as well? Or the CNMI region?
That, let me, I'll, I'll address that. So CNMI actually does have, as far as the location, as far as the location in the Pacific is advantageous to get power. What they don't have in CNMI is the interconnection. So what happens as all these cables converge in Guam, what each of our companies will do is interconnect all those cables. So a customer might want to come from Australia, come to Guam, and interconnect to other cable systems, and each, each one has their own unique route that they want to follow. So we call that backhaul. The backhaul would be the interconnection. So we all interconnect to all the different cables. As they said, we, we buy capacity. We each have capacity on each of those different systems. So even though we're not necessarily owning the systems, we interconnect those. So the disadvantage for Saipan or CNMI generally is that they're not, they would have to then come to Guam to do the interconnection. So, but if they were just coming from the States to stop in, in, in Micronesia and then on without interconnecting, they would have that advantage.
Thank you. For RTI, this is to demand transparency. It says, the subsea cable owners, their landing station, and neutral data centers are privileged to operate their critical infrastructure in such an environment, and we must be transparent with the governments where cables land, including Guam's. Well, how, what type of transparency are you talking about, really dislocation of the cables? Or is it, should we create an entity that facilitates this type of, I guess, operation or task?
The, building subsea cables is always, you know, it's an art and a science. And so, Senator, what I meant was, it has to be collaborative and, and transparent. You know, I, I sometimes joke in saying that everything that can go wrong will, and with respect to everything from permitting to, you know, construction. So the issues, the problems that happen along the way are, are not insignificant. When, in, in 2020, when 2021, our CTO, Masiro Soma, wasn't able to travel to Guam, and so he was on the phone constantly with, with Dan Mendiola, talking about various ways to solve problems, missing equipment, and all of these other things that impacted, with COVID, that impacted the supply chain. It had a, it had, I'm still astonished that we got that cable up on time by one day. But those types of problems happen all the time, whether or not there's COVID. And, and sometimes they're not great problems. We, we nicked part of the soft coral when, well, the supplier did, but it's, we're, we're responsible for it, so we had to replace that, and, and we replaced that and much more. And so those types of mistakes, those human errors, you know, they, there has to be, if there's a collaborative effort, then, then none of that gets hidden. So that's what I mean. The mistakes are made all the time, and, you know, the, the bigger the mistake, the, the more immediate it has to be reported. You know, this isn't just something that carries the internet. This critical infrastructure is vital to the national security of the United States, and which is why the executive branch has deemed it critical infrastructure. And so there can be no secrets in terms of where the cable lands, the KMZ files, where this precise path it takes from coming on the ocean into the beach manhole into the neutral data center. And it's quite uncomfortable, perhaps, for some in the beginning, but it's, it's far better to be that way. And so that's how we chose to, to build cables, and it seems to have worked out okay. And, and it works, that, it works well for others who have the same type of approach. You know, we're not the only one that gets cables done. There are a lot of companies out there. But we are the one that gets the most cables done and connected to Guam. So, so I hope that helps, Senator. Sorry about the long answer.
No, thank you very much. One last question for BSP Coastal Management Program. Would you be able to conduct periodic reviews with the cable owners and annual, annual reporting? Only because you, I guess you said that you were only aware of three sites, and, and then you heard that there were 11 cable landings, and then someone else chimed in and said there's six active cable landings, international. And then someone else chimed in and said, there's six active cable landings, international, and four that are pending future? So we, it, it seems like we don't have proper accounting of the types of cable running, coming to Guam, interconnecting on Guam, and running back out. Would you be able to perform this function?
So we reviewed the, the short answer is, we would be able to perform the function. But the nature of cable landings is such where the immediate impact to the environment is, it is right when the cable, the ground is prepped and the cable is installed. After that, it's pretty much hands-off. There is no real maintenance or real, any other environmental impacts. I know that there is monitoring often applied to these applications. And so I think we, we could definitely develop a forum where we can come back and, and discuss and review the, the progress of the monitoring, the progress of the environment to recover from any, any activity that would have degraded that area as a result of the permitted activity. But we'll take that under consideration, Senator.
Thank you so very much. That is my concern, right? Like, when we were discussing this, we really don't, at least the government agency that has an idea, doesn't really have an idea on how many cables there are, what are the cables' functions, where they're going through, the impact of national security. And so that's my concern. And really, this legislation is, is a big step forward. I think it's a leap. Because for many years, we were just granting access to CLTC properties or land for cable landings. And sometimes we don't even know that there are certain cables coming through our island. And so I think this is a good start. So, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I thank all of you for coming and sharing your better business practices. Also, for those that have provided some subject matter expertise on this issue, thank you very much. I hope that we can continue to take a closer look as far as transparency requirements, environmental impacts, and further improve the bill on those measures. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Nelson. Senator Taiti Gueye, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you, everyone, for being here. I know it's a little bit late, so I'll try not to belabor this. I do appreciate that everyone here today is in support, basically in support of this legislation, to provide a template moving forward. However, I do, and I know your concerns, some of the, the comments on, on changes to the legislation, I'll read that thoroughly. It's kind of hard to hear sometimes in here with the echo, to hear what people are saying with the masks, so I'll be reviewing this. Do you have a question for RTI? RTI, where you deal with cables here, are you currently working with any, like, DOCOMO or GTA right now, providing a service with them?
Ah, yes, one, we land on our own, and one cable we land with GTA, and one we, and the other one is also, sorry, one we land with Google, one with GTA, one on our own. So we work with, but we work with all of the companies there, including, we interconnect to Rod Boss's place, otherwise known as DOCOMO Pacific. We are interconnecting with, with ITNE. And I've had discussions with PDS. I think we, we work with everyone, because we are a neutral provider.
Okay, thank you, sir. And the, then I guess with DOCOMO right now, Mr. Boss, the cable that is connected from Guam to Saipan currently, how much do you pay in landing fees there, currently?
We pay 60,000, 60,000 a year.
Currently, right now, you pay 60,000?
60,000.
Into Saipan only?
No, it's for landings in Saipan, Rota, and Tinian.
But is it connected from Guam to Saipan, and then Saipan to Rota and Tinian?
No, it's actually, we have branching units. We have a direct line from, from Guam to Saipan, and branching units that go to each of the islands.
Okay, so you have a direct line from Guam, correct? That's connecting to Saipan. And, and that connection, what kind of fees or license do you have just to be able to leave Guam, you know, with that? Do you have any cost incurred in that cost? Do you incur any costs, any fees or licensure fees?
We had, we had, when we built the cable, we did have fees. I'd have to look up the detail of those fees on the Guam side. I was saying, we were talking about the landing fees, this landing fee.
Okay, no, the fees, basically.
We don't, we don't pay an equivalent fee in Guam currently. That's why, I think that's what this bill's about.
But you do in Saipan when it comes to landing on Saipan? But you don't pay anything on Guam?
Yes.
The next question I have is, Mr. John Day, I hope, is he still available, Mr. Day? Are you still available?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, thank you. The fees that was recommended in this legislation, can you kind of explain where this, I mean, I, I think there are other jurisdictions in California. I'm not, I'm not sure the, the, the exact amount, but it deals with landing fees. Can you kind of elaborate on, on these fees that were created in this bill versus the prior bill that was passed? And how, how this funding, this amount came up?
Well, I think generally, the, the fees, this goes back to the prior bill that was worked on for the GTA landing at Alapang. And at that time, I think there was a, some comparable fees that were looked at that, that were being charged by California, some California municipalities for landing of similar cables in very, I think there was two landing points in California that were, that were looked at. And, you know, that, that information was public information that was available. And I think that was the basis for that. And, and I, you, you should probably ask the Speaker where these, where the, the numbers here came from. But I think these numbers are fairly consistent with, with the structure that was, that was used in the Alapang Agreement, as I, as I think Dan also mentioned. But I think the important thing is, in the past, the government has been granting these, these landing fees on a bulk basis for the, for the entire pathway, and not charging on a per cable network basis. And the new regime, new pricing regime here that we're looking at is by cable landing, by specific cable landing, not a, a bulk number of conduits. I think that what happened in PD was an example of how the government did not get a good deal. And the government had, you know, through ignorance or whatever, the PD deal is a terrible deal for the government of Guam. And, you know, I think, I think Rob Boss alluded to the basketball court and other community-type things. Now, I don't think, I don't think a basketball court's worth a thousand, $100,000 a year. So, you know, I think the government is doing a good job in, in catching this up. But I, I think the government, this is needed, these are changes that have needed to be made for a while. And the government of Guam has been getting short-changed. And I think the, I think the rates that are in this bill, I think they're, they're fair and consistent. And they're consistent with what the, what's being charged to GTA, which is, which is equitable for all parties.
Well, thank you so much for that. Dan, from GTA. I, I know a conduit, right? One conduit which can insert several cables in one. Right now, the, the one in Haganya Bay is six, I believe that contract allows for six cables, right, going in and out?
It will lock, I'm sorry. It will be the construction of six tubes there, six conduits, if you will, like you said.
Six conduits. So in other words, but that's all going to be in one major tube going in, right?
No, there's going to be six.
Okay. Oh, there'll be six?
That's, that's correct.
But within that six?
That's right. And it's, and it's almost, it's exactly patterned, if you look at the, the language in the Speaker's legislation. It's up to six again. So the template that was, the Public Law 3646 is basically the template for this going forward for everybody else.
Okay. And is there any reason why it was only six? Could there be 10?
I, you know, I can't remember what, what we had discussed back and forth. There may have been contemplated eight or whatever. But we just said six. And it really wasn't that wide of a corridor originally. We just wanted like 10 feet wide. Remember, the, the way that we were looking at it was a 10-foot swath, oh, width. I can't, I can't remember the, the distance.
And how many cables can fit in that?
Presumably six.
Just in the 10-foot?
Within the conduit. Well, it depends on the conduits. We're putting in six. We have six for six.
Okay.
Remember, these cables, these cables are, I'm gonna say, maybe a fire hose, the width of a fire hose. Sometimes they're, they're not sexy, they're like Kevlar-wrapped, just to prevent sharks. Sharks actually bite cables. But in the instance of ours, we've taken the extraordinary steps and additional costs of doing what's called horizontal drilling to ensure that the ecosystems in the area are not impacted and affected. Everything's going to be bored underneath the seabed, as opposed to what Edwin had mentioned earlier on cap and cover, where I think all the other cable systems on Guam, they cut a slot into the seabed, they lay the conduit down, fire the, the fiber optics through, cover the conduit with some fillable material, and then the sand goes over it. Ours is, I'm gonna say 20, 30, maybe even 40 meters, depending on where it comes from. And this is all being mapped out with all of our engineers out there that we have on, on contract.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Mr. Boss, I know you wanted to say something.
I just, I just wanted to add one thing. One of the things with, with cables generally, whether they're subsea cables or cables running along the side of the streets, is us as operators, we want diverse routing. So we want two different ways to get to the same point. So if one, if a backhoe digs up one cable, we'll be able to route the traffic on the other way, and you don't lose your internet or your communications. So diversity is really important, and it's important here terrestrially, but it's also important in the subsea world. So the fact that we have three main channels coming in to Guam is a problem, because it's getting crowded in those lines. So I think this is really an important issue, because we, all the international carriers, everybody who wants to bring a cable to Guam, they want diversity in that. So they want these new landings to be able to find, you know, a diverse route, so that they, they don't have that vulnerability. And I think particularly as we see the instability in the geopolitical scene, these things are becoming much more important. Government entities, you know, government, the military have their own cables, but they also have unofficial traffic on these other cables. So they're also very, very interested in that diverse routing. So there, you're, you'll probably see more and more requests to land cables in diverse areas.
Thank you for that. Dean, do you think that, based on this, in the bill, the six cables, is that six cables coming in and six cables coming out, a total of 12? Or is it three cables coming in and three cables coming out? In, in, when you?
Well, you could, you could, I kind of referenced a bit on that earlier. And I think the Speaker caught the reference on it, on the definition of the cable system. So, and that was for purposes of wanting to ensure that the community here, we don't price ourselves out of the market for any would-be licensees to come and consider. Because some of them are looking at the legislation from 3646, and they said, it's supposed to be a cable system, supposed to be a two-ended system. So a cable system is one, so they shouldn't get charged twice. Because I'll give you an example. There's a cable system that bifrost, a bifrost cable system, starts in, in Singapore, has its fees there, lands in Guam, right? And it has to land in Guam for purposes of going forward, just simply because of the physics of it all, it has to be energized. The, you have to get the power generation and the stability there. Otherwise, the connectivity is not going to be as optimal for the benefit of whoever's on that cable. So you get charged in Singapore, you get charged in Guam, you land in the tube in Guam. Now, if it's outgoing, and this instance, again, a bifrost, going on to California or the U.S., they're like, why are we getting charged twice on this? It's one landing. It's, that's what, that's what I was suggesting in the language for consideration by the legislature for making some modifications. Because going back to the valuations of the 100 grand that was determined by this body last August, when you guys voted on it, it was based on valuations that the committee had done with looking at California jurisdictions. And we validated that as well with certified, qualified appraisers who are experts in submerged appraisals and stuff. So that's, that's your consideration that you guys should have taken into account. Otherwise, otherwise, they're gonna go to Saipan, they're gonna go elsewhere and take all of the business elsewhere.
Well, I, I don't agree with that. Guam is so strategically located, and that gives us an advantage in, in this side of the world.
I know, but the CNMI is only 100 miles up north.
Connecting Asia with, with the U.S., we are so strategic. We have one of the most sought-after locations. And not just because of our location, it's because what we have on Guam, we have the capability of getting through a typhoon really quickly and, you know, getting our power back up and running. This is one of the things, we're a U.S. destination. You know, for any cable company, say, we'll bypass Guam, and we'll go to Palau, or we'll go to another, you know, non-U.S. country, I don't believe that. Because they don't have the stability as we do in the U.S. territory. They don't have that stability, and they don't have the infrastructure to maintain these cables, which need to have constant power, need to be able to recover from a storm. So I, I don't believe that part. We've done enough study. I've been working on this since, you know, the 35th, when we created the Fiber Optic Task Force, you know, to, to finally get to where we are today. In PD, for GTA, is there a limit on how many cables come into PD and how many come out?
Again, there's six. Similar to?
Yeah, but is there a limit on the contract?
What do you mean, a limit on contract?
On how many cables can come into PD, the landing station in PD that you had?
We only have a license for six. I, I don't, I don't understand what you're asking.
My, okay, the contract that's currently with GTA?
The license agreement that we have with the Tomorrow Land Trust Commission permits us six. And only six, nothing more.
And going out? But the one in, and the one in Haganya?
The Alupang one, that's to be constructed, assuming all of the permitting and everything, all the clearances are done, it's going to allow again, under what you guys passed here, six.
Okay, I'll have to review that, Madam Speaker, because I know that the PD contract was created before we even finished with Bill 36 dash?
That was back in 2016, 2017.
I've, I've reviewed the agreement, and there, it's for six. But there are other PD cables, such as Tata, right?
Yeah, ours is, ours is six, our license, there's others.
So there's a, there's? So it's a Tata?
There's another one as well.
So?
Remember what Mr. Regis was saying, like, the Punggant Reef down at PD, that's one of the three. And there's cable systems that come in and out. We're not, we're the, our license is just for us, for six.
When you're talking about cables coming into Guam and recharging, rejuvenating, and then shooting out to other locations, right? And you talk about that it's only coming in and to be charged, but not be charged a second time going out. Are other jurisdictions that same way, when they're being charged, like in California, Hawaii, for instance?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand your question.
Okay, so when the cables come in to get charged, right? Cables come in here to Guam, they get charged first?
I'll give you this example.
And then when they leave Guam after being charged, right? When it goes back out, are other jurisdictions like Hawaii and California have those same double charges?
It's my understanding, like, for example, Hawaii, that's another good neighbor, just to the east of us. It's my understanding that when a cable lands there that's traversing from Asia through Guam to Hawaii, when it lands there, and it goes on to, say, Wan Wiltshire or somewhere else in California, it's only getting charged once.
Okay, in Singapore, which is considered one of the largest fiber optic cables receivers in Singapore, are there two charges there?
I, I can't speak to Singapore. I'm only speaking Hawaii right now. I, I can't speak to Singapore. I'm only speaking Hawaii right now. The one that I recall.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Ross, you had something to say?
Yeah, maybe this will clear it up. I, um, I used to work for a company called Pacific Crossing, and they, back in the, a long time ago, they, they, when the, you know, Dan talked about consortium, cable consortium, when they build it, built a cable, a bunch of telephone companies all around the world would get together as a consortium to build it. And the reason they did that is because it's so expensive to do. So back in this day, they built a cable, uh, that went from Wa- uh, Washington State to Japan, then down to southern Japan, and then to California, and then back up the coast to Washington in a ring. And so in this case, the, the cable is, is, is redundant. In the, one cable breaks, you can just send all the traffic the other way. But it costs a billion dollars, and this is in the 1990s, um, that was just incredible to, to, nobody can really afford to do that. So now they're buil- building single-leg cables, just from one point to the next point. So when it starts in Singapore, comes to Guam, then it continues on, that's not considered two landings, that's a single landing, even though it's coming in and going back out because it just needs to get power. So that is, that single-leg cable, that's a single landing in each point. Stops in Hawaii, same story. They're not paying two different landings. They're paying, not paying a landing coming in and then going out. So that's, nobody does that on a single-leg cable.
Well, do you know that, if they do that in Singapore as well?
I, I don't, I don't know specifically, but if it starts in Singapore, my assumption that is it's, it's a single cable coming out. If it continues on somewhere else, I assume that it's just like everywhere else, that it's only a single landing.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sure.
Um, Madam Chair, um, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. However, I think if, if the committee is, um, planning on making any adjustments, that we do look at what Singapore is doing. Singapore is in our backyard. You know, they're the largest influx of, of fiber optic cables in that area, which puts us very close by. And I, and I think this is, was long overdue. Um, finally setting it straight for many years, um, you know, we have not really charged these cable companies coming into Guam what it should be charged. I mean, this, I think, is a, a great step moving forward. Um, the only other, uh, concern I have is on page nine, line 26, on, uh, is just the comments there, Madam Speaker, with, uh, this is Bill 227, is, um, instead of, right now you have in excess of the prime rate, and instead read of the current license, uh, license fee. So that's just one of the, something to, to look into, just for the record, and of course, uh, requesting to be co-sponsor of the legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you, everyone, for being here today, and those who are on, on Zoom. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Taijin, if you could submit that to me in writing, just I want to be sure I understand your, and, um, all right. Uh, Senator Paris, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So thank you for all your suggestions and for being here today. I'm just looking over the testimony, and, um, so some of the things I'm seeing is the non-exclusivity part of the bill. And, uh, I could see potential, um, problems arising if you have companies sharing the same, uh, landing site. Um, does the FCC provide any kind of specifications to, um, minimize any kind of disagreement between companies using the same landing site? Uh, this is for any of the representatives here.
Well, we have, we're building our own cable landing station. So if somebody wants to come in, then they're going to have to get our concurrence to come in and, and develop some sort of agreement with us. If you're asking if the FCC, uh, regulates with regards to licensure of cable operators, they absolutely do. There's, there's a, you got to get your certification and licensure to be able to get that license, um, to, uh, own and operate a cable system in the United States or any jurisdiction thereof.
Uh, yes, Mr. Boss.
Um, if, if someone owns a ca-, builds a cable landing station, and they have the capacity built into that, that landing station to accept more than one cable, then the builder of the cable has an option to land in that station or build their own cable landing station. So that's a, there's kind of a difference, I think an important difference, between a cable landing station and a data center. Sometimes they're combined in the same building, but often there's a landing station where they, where they actually land and get the power and do the interconnection, and then there would be a data center separately. So you could land, someone could come, there's down, um, I think, uh, you know, there, there are multiple landings here where, where, as a landing station. The AT&amp;T facility that they're talking about is actually a landing station. Um, but it's, you know, AT&amp;T, it doesn't have a physical presence, but they still manage the equipment there, right, that they have from that. And some of those old cables that came into Tengkeetson have now been retired. But, uh, that's, that's a landing station. So there's, that, I think that's an important distinction. And, and I think that the FCC, of course, will regulate how we, how we do that interconnect, but they don't say you can't have as many. If, if GTA had six, six ducts coming in, they could land six different cables at their landing station if they wanted to. And again, the, the constraints are, the people who are building those cables are going to be really careful about how they, how they land too many cables in one spot because they don't get that diversity.
Okay, thank you. Um, so one of, uh, the other-
To that, uh, conversation?
Yes. Oh, yes, thank you.
As, as a party that's landed, uh, what, seven landings so far in three different continents, uh, the FCC does not, um, have a specific requirement for the type of cable landing station. What they do require is the, um, you know, after installation, the, uh, how you operate that cable. There are technical and security requirements that are very specific. So, uh, but, uh, but for the most part, the FCC, you know, stays out of it. There are other agencies that, uh, get involved after the cable's completed, and there are obligations to those, uh, U.S. government agencies. Uh, so it's, um, the FCC allows it to operate as a free market, as they should, and this allows for competition to take place and for companies like mine that build cables to find the most efficient path, uh, to landing and operating cables. Uh, the, one other requirement is the, the FCC also requires that the, um, that the cable owner and operator own the cable landing station, and that's a FCC requirement. It has been, uh, that the cable owner and operator has de jure or de facto control of the cable landing station. So, uh, there are various regulations on that, and if it's important, they're happy to share those.
All right, thank you. Um, so another thing I'm looking at, the testimony is, um, I believe it's from, um, Edwin. Uh, so you mentioned in your testimony, allows assignment of rights. And so what do you, um, can you explain that a little bit more? Uh, because I think right now, is that something that's practiced regularly in the telecommunications as far as, uh, selling of rights and, you know, basically on the, the stock market? Is this something that is, is done? I'm sorry, go ahead, Edwin.
Uh, I'm not too sure if I, um, understand the, the question. Um, I, I don't recall mentioning development rights in my, um, testimony.
It actually says, oh, I'm sorry, it allows the assignment of rights. So maybe the transfer of a rights to use. I'm assuming that's what that means in your testimony?
I'll need some time to research that question further, Senator.
Okay. And then I guess this, this can go to the telecommunications representatives. Is this something that's practiced regularly, assignment of rights?
Uh, the assignment of rights, uh, Senator, if you're speaking with respect to assigning rights of the cable, uh, those are at the, uh, you know, at the, uh, leisure of the, of the U.S. government. Uh, in particular, the FCC and the agency is called Team Telecom. If, if it's in respect to, uh, critical infrastructure, which includes the cable, the landing station, or the equipment that, uh, that operates the cable. Hope that helps.
The Team Telecom reference he's making is a host of, uh, it's an alphabet soup of, um, security entities in the U.S., whether it's the FBI, Justice Department, CIA, DIA, NIS, Homeland Security, et cetera. And they look at telecoms, uh, particularly if they're foreign-owned, uh, to make sure that that critical infrastructure, they want to know who's on that critical infrastructure, what equipment is on that critical infrastructure that may be banned or prohibited, et cetera. So that's, that's the reference that he's making.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, that's really an important consideration, especially if you're looking at tiered, uh, corporations, you know, who's owning, who's controlling these, these corporations.
In addition to Team Telecom, Senator, for, again, for the foreign, foreign-owned telecoms, GTA's not foreign-owned, but we were previously, you have to deal, they have to deal with CFIUS, and that's on the ownership. CFIUS is the Committee on Foreign Investment in the U.S., and that's run out of the White House and, I think, Treasury and Commerce Department, that they peel back to look at the ownership of any particular telecom entity.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
That is correct, yeah.
Sorry, did I, I'm sorry, did you want to add to that, sir?
Uh, I thought I was on mute, Senator. That is 100% correct. I was just complimenting, uh, Mr. Taijinko's answer.
All right, thank you for that. And so another, um, testimony that was provided, uh, recommended open access landing, if, um, I believe it was from Mr. Matulik, if you can explain that a little bit more.
Um, yes, Senator, the open access just refers to the ability for cables to land, and, uh, once they come on shore, you know, I think it was Rob Boss that pointed out that cable landing station and also the data center, they may be combined into one facility. And, uh, open access is just the concept of cables being able to land on shore and interconnect with other cables. And, and if, in order to create a, what I call a digital ecosystem, where all these different companies come together to interconnect with each other, and, and actually it accelerates economic benefit to the island, creating jobs and all the other benefits that go along with cables. But the creation of that digital, uh, ecosystem is, is directly related to what we call open access. And if you look at a few of the companies that provide that open access, Wanwulshur is a data center in Los Angeles, at Tokyo, in Tokyo, or Equinix, they land, uh, cables also. But that open access just means very simply that ca-, that subsea cable owners can interconnect to other customers, and their customers can interconnect to them, in an environment that's, uh, that allows them to do so, uh, easily, cost-effectively, and with, uh, with minimal rules, um, not with respect to, you know, technical integrity, but minimal rules with respect to trying to limit their growth. Uh, so you, really what you want to do is you want to accelerate trade and, and bring on new companies that want to make investments, and, and you do that by making it easy. Uh, and so that's, that's, uh, that's what open access is all about, and I tried to provide a simplified definition in my letter.
And, uh, just a follow-up questions regarding that. So that, would that require different, uh, fee structure?
No, not really. It requires the ability to, uh, set up a competitive fee structure. Uh, for example, what they call a cross-connect. If, if I bring on a cable into Guam, uh, and I want to connect, uh, let's say, the, uh, the CUS cable, uh, which, which comes from California into, uh, GTA's landing facility in PD, and then it continues to Southeast Asia. If I wanted to interconnect that to another cable up in, up in Tengkeetson, uh, I would, the open access refers to, uh, setting up an environment in the PD, the GTA landing station, that allows me to cost-effectively and easily, uh, make a simple connection, a wired connection between my cable and PD and the, uh, and the cable station in, in Tengkeetson, so that I could set up a connection that goes to another cable. It's almost exactly like an airport hub. Uh, and that's why we refer to telecom, uh, hubs, uh, like Guam is a, is an amazing hub. If you look at what an airport hub does, if you want to take a plane from Japan to, to, uh, to Europe, perhaps you land in another country, and then you, you get off your Japan Airlines, uh, airplane, and you hop on Singapore Airlines or, or some other airline. But the whole point is that you want to be able to go from one cable to another, uh, using a hub, and you want to be able to do it quickly and cost-effectively. It's all about pricing, the policy.
Another follow-up question is the overhead. So is there an expected, uh, amount of money that's required to monitor or, um, maintain such, uh, type of, uh, hub?
Uh, no, I think it's, uh, no, it's, it's all about policy. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's not about technology, it's about policy. Uh, connecting one cable to another is simply taking a wire like this and, and connecting it from one side of a cable to another, uh, perhaps oversimplifying by a little bit, but not much. And, uh, so it has very little to do with, uh, the available technology, has to do with pricing policy. Typically, what monopolies do in other countries is they, uh, they create policies that are economically unfriendly, and that, that limits growth, which protects their revenue base as an incumbent of, uh, in a foreign country. But it doesn't do anything for innovation or for the entrepreneurial, entrepreneurs that are delivering new solutions. Uh, so, so when you're trying to create a neutral cable environment where cables can operate in, uh, through, and with open access and interconnect with each other, you want to do that with, uh, a policy that allows you to quickly and easily and cost-effectively connect from one cable to another. It's all about policy. It's commercial policy and not usually regulated by government.
Okay, in regards to, so, um, I don't know if you're familiar about deep sea mining? So, um, as of December 6, uh, the International Seabed Authority, um, is fast-tracking regulations for deep sea mining, and has the, um, industry looked at potential, uh, conflicts with the, the laying of the, the undersea cables? Is this a concern for this industry?
I apologize for interrupting you, Senator. Uh, so, Senator, well, we, we've had a few instances with deep sea mining and dredging and other activities. Um, and there's an organization that, uh, that is outstanding. It's called the ICPC, the International Cable Protection Committee. And one of the foremost authorities on, that sits on the Board of Advisors is, is Mr. Kent Bressi, who is a, a regular attorney in Washington, D.C. But the ICPC is, is, is kind of a, it, it's an association that, that helps, uh, with advocacy, uh, when it comes to things that, uh, will impact undersea fiber optic cables. And so we look to the ICPC when we runs, when we run into these types of problems, and, uh, and deep sea mining is one, uh, issue that we had, not far from Guam, actually. Um, and we wrote letters to the entity, we wrote letters to their government, and somehow, uh, we came up with a solution. They had to relocate their equipment. We also, uh, had other issues with, uh, dredging, um, in, near Australia, where another entity was picking up sand and, uh, and dumping it close to where we were putting our cable. But they were do- doing that without the proper authorization from the government of Australia, just like the deep sea mining was doing it, doing what they were doing without the proper authorization from the government of Guam or CNMI. Uh, so, uh, anyway, my point is that there are advocacy groups and experts that help to protect against unauthorized activity. Uh, but it does get sensitive because some of the, some of the waters, it's not clear who governs those. I hope that helps.
Yes, that helps. Thank you very much. So this question is for Edwin. Um, so in looking at, in page 11 of the bill, under compliance with environmental laws, um, do you think U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service should be included in this? Because, um, my understanding is that some of the marine species are actually under their purview.
So my understanding is U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, um, regulates the terrestrial endangered species, whereas NOAA Fisheries regulates the marine, um, endangered species.
Yeah, I, I recall that there was actually some marine species that are, um, under the purview of U.S. fish. Uh, when we were reviewing the, the federal consistency regarding marine mammals, so I believe there is a, a demarcation. So maybe that's something we could follow up with. Uh, the other one is the decommissioning process. Uh, does this bill, you think, sufficiently, sufficiently address any kind of decommissioning of the cables? Uh, for Edwin?
So my, my thought on decommissioning, I, I think has to be addressed on a case-by-case basis, and I'm not too sure if the legislation is the right place to set the standards for decommissioning. Uh, for some of the, the, uh, new techniques that we're going to see, such as the, uh, horizontal drilling, I, I think, once those conduits are in there, um, leaving them there after the utility of them has expired, it's probably the best thing to do, rather than trying to dig them up. Um, so I, I think that, um, that, that would have to be addressed based on the different, um, uh, unique, the uniqueness of the different cables and how they're, how they're laid.
Okay, one last question, um, regarding infrastructure bill. Um, is there an estimate of how much funding is going towards telecommunications, and, and would this go towards the building of undersea cables?
You mean the federal infrastructure bill?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, the states, all the states for, for broadband are supposed to get $100 million each. Guam is getting, Guam and the territories are splitting up 100 million bucks. So Guam is getting 25 million? is getting $25 million. Separate apart from that, there's some other buckets of money under the infrastructure for, not necessarily subcables, there's some middle-mile funding, I can't remember off the top of my, I'm going to say 1.1 billion, but that's a big pool for everybody in the U.S. to be, to avail of, rather than the specific carve-out in the instance what I just noted to you.
Mr. Boss, thank you, Mr. Tajinco.
These, you know, Guam is not underserved in its connectivity, and I think that's because of our geography. We have a lot of cables coming in and out, so we have plenty of capacity. Really, this is market-driven. So some of those federal money that should be used for, as Dan said, broadband expansion to underserved areas would not really have anything to do with subsea capacity cable, because we have, really, competition drives that. And those are all, at least the ones that I know about recently, they're all private cables. So these are privately funded by private companies.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Perez. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think we all understand the, the need, obviously, in this day and age for ensuring that we have the ability to continue to communicate and be able to do it consistently. I don't even know if I can leave my house without my phone. I'm sure many people feel, feel that way. I, I understand and certainly appreciate the need to standardize a process under which we address licensing these properties through the land trust, so that there is an equal playing field, so that companies that are coming in to do, or existing ones that are here to do this, will know what the requirements are. I think it's a very difficult process when you have to go to the legislature every time you're going to, you know, address adding a new line. I'm sure GTA can appreciate the challenges that they've had to go through. I do want to note, because I heard the comment made a little earlier with regards to a basketball court, and if it was the case that we were bargaining basketball courts, I think we would have want, wanted GTA to construct one in every village, but I think the specific reason that a new basketball court was included was the existing footprint of the facility that GTA was constructing was on an existing basketball court, and so you're simply contributing back to the village of PD what you were taking away. So I don't think that was like adding an additional candy into the bag, so to speak, to construct a basketball court. Looking forward, because I understand, of course, as time goes on, these cables age, there's a need to either expand or replace. I mean, what's the average lifespan of, of these cable lines? And, and are we looking at the near future? Is there anyone else? I mean, of course, GTA was the most recent case brought before us last year, but are there any of your other companies that are looking in the near term to construct additional landing sites around the island, or to replace, upgrade these lines? Is this anything in the near term that we can anticipate?
Yes, Senator, I mean, there's a lot of ongoing activity, as we talked about, for new cables, and I think all of us are looking at what's the best way for our individual business and what we can do on Guam with what appears to be a continuing flow of cables. So, from an IT&amp;E standpoint, we definitely are evaluating the potential for additional cable landings on Guam.
And is that something you're looking at the next five years, 10 years? But, but, just to give us a general idea of, you know, how often would we have to deal with this issue with regards to construction of these facilities and licensing of these additional facilities if needed?
Oh, yeah, definitely within a five-year window, for sure.
If, to answer your question, Senator, on the, the lifespan of a cable, generally speaking, it's probably about 25 years, 20, 25 years. You can add a little bit more life to it by putting on some electronics, particularly for these older cable systems that are going to be retired or be decommissioned and stuff. And, you know, trying to answer your question again, down the horizon, there's, there's 11 cable systems in and out of this island, and I've testified on this previously, five of which are either half-life or coming towards, and out of that five, there's a couple of them that are probably nearing their end of life. So, you can probably project, I don't know whether or not Guam's going to get many, many more cable systems coming in and out of Guam at this point. I mean, these gentlemen may think that it might. We've already anticipated what we have to do, as to what we're doing presently, based upon 3646, but I'm sure that they, they're probably planning to do it. They're not cheap endeavors, they're not simple endeavors, because there's a, a number of moving parts here, from permitting and licensing to construction. I mean, even at the point when we start getting in on the construction phases, it's, it's still going to take a while to get it. And we want to make sure, to your point, when you, when you started out on your line of questioning, to ensure that there's reliable, robust connectivity for everybody here, in an affordable manner.
Well, and granted, and of course, the same thing would apply for the companies that are bringing in these lines to begin with as well. I mean, that's something I'm sure all of you weigh with regards to routing through Guam. Other than that, I mean, I don't have any major issue, but I do, Madam Speaker, want to ask the Chamor Land Trust, because we're, we're essentially designing this for these funds to go through the land trust and authorizing the land trust to enter. I think our language here on page three, lines 18, essentially, we're, we're looking at giving the Chamor Land Trust the authority for a period exceeding the 21-year limit. We're essentially authorizing them now to be able to enter into these agreements, and I, I don't know if you can grab a microphone, because I do want to ask this formally, or if someone can perhaps maybe give up a chair for the Land Trust Commission to sit in. I'm sure beer planting and ancestral lands wouldn't mind. Thank you. You know, in all fairness, I do want to ask this question with the Land Trust, because I want to ensure the Land Trust has the capability of being able to properly enter into these negotiations and ensure the interest of the Land Trust is protected, because I've been around long enough to see that there's some decent lease agreements with the government of Guam. I've also seen some very disastrous agreements entered into by public officials within the government of Guam that have cost the ratepayers and the taxpayers far more than $600,000, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I mean, our pennies compared to the cost of litigation if these agreements are not properly entered into, or it ends up becoming a legal mess, which sometimes does happen. God knows, we have experience with that. What are your capabilities? Because we've had a history of the Chamor Land Trust that has not had an ability to consistently ensure follow-through of lease agreements, all the way down to payments being made by companies that are leasing property from the Chamor Land Trust. I think, obviously, the golf course indebted is a very good and classic example. These things become politicized, and when they become politicized, because we have business interests that assume that they can get a deal or around the government of Guam, a lot of it is because of our inability to properly ensure that the interests of our people are met. So I definitely want to ensure, even though we all want to say we want to do this for the Land Trust, because this money is being taken off from the rest of the people of Guam, specifically to accommodate, as we did with the creation of the Land Trust, to, to find revenue sources to help fund the infrastructure and other needs of the Land Trust. So, I want to know whether or not you're capable because of the record. I want to know how, has the Land Trust cleaned up some of these issues? Do you have still current outstanding funds owed to the Land Trust on these land leases, and what are your capability of properly collecting on it?
First of all, Senator, thank you for your question. I can speak, perhaps, first of all, on the GTA bill that was passed, and when the lease was written, we did work closely with the Speaker's office. We shared it with her before the lease was signed. So as far as executing the GTA, I don't believe we had any problems because of the legislation that was written to outline all of the terms and conditions on that. Now, with regards to past, yes, I will admit that there are issues. We do have a few leases that have been very challenging to us, and we're doing our best to address them with the lessies. We have full transparency on them, so if there's any particular questions on any of them, with regards to the, the golf course, there has been communication, and, and, you know, they've asked us, will we abate? In our, it wasn't the last board meeting, but the one prior to that, we disclosed the situation to the board, and there is no abatement at this time. The board approved us to support if they choose to go to the, to request for rate increases or whatever, we would support that, so that they can meet their obligation. And I'm not sure with any other issues that you'd like to discuss here.
Yeah, I don't want to get into a prolonged discussion about any particular case. I'm simply bringing it up because I want to ensure that the Land Trust has the capability of properly executing these agreements and ensuring that they're in the interests of the Land Trust. And I bring that up because the Land Trust has, for every year it's existed, you know, it has a history of not ensuring proper compliance, not ensuring that these leases meet the requirements. We can go down the list. I mean, I've had the opportunity to work directly with the Land Trust, do, you know, not just per hearsay, but my own experience in looking at these contracts, I don't want to see them politicized, I don't want to see them where, where they're slanted, and, and again, I mean, for me, it's always the primary interest of ensuring the public interest is protected. In this case, the Land Trust interest is protected, because we don't, we can end up in litigation, it's very costly, and I don't know if the Land Trust has the resources to challenge some of this, or the finances, or is this something the taxpayers of Guam should be burdened with? So I'm simply bringing that up. I think that's something the Land Trust needs to be up to speed. I mean, if you're wanting to have all these additional authorities, you need to have the ability to execute them. And I don't know, Madam Speaker, perhaps, maybe another day, another time, we can have a, a follow-up, perhaps, with the Land Trust to, to go over some of those outstanding leases, so that we can find out where they're at with regards to ensuring compliance. So I do bring that up. And then also, in all fairness, for any of the private companies that want to enter into such agreements, everyone wants to have a nice, clean agreement, that objectives can be made, and, and deliverables can be met, and we can move on. Too often, some of these contracts with the government become very politicized, and that, that's very concerning, because then it's not clean. And I think we all want to have a clean process and clean contracts. So, you know, I'll leave that to another day. Hopefully, the Speaker will call such a meeting at a separate time to discuss maybe where you guys are with regards to that. Who, who is your legal counsel? Do you have your own private counsel aside that you hire at the Land Trust? Assistant Attorney General, Assistant Land Trust now? How, how do you have, who is your legal representation for? Who will be involved in drafting and engaging in these contract negotiations?
Well, it has been Attorney Nick Toft, from the AG's office.
So it is out of the Attorney General's. You don't have a separate attorney that you're hired with. It would be through the Attorney General's office.
No, ma'am.
Well, I mean, I, I'm sure another day we can address the infrastructure of where you're at with regards to that, but again, in all fairness, if we're going to grant all these additional authorities to allow the Land Trust to enter into these long-term agreements, I just want to make sure you guys have the capability and capacity to ensure that, that, you can ensure that, that the decisions are made in the interest of the Land Trust and nothing else, because that is a concern, and that historically has not always been the case with regards to these legal agreements. I mean, nowadays, at our age, 21 years, I don't know, that's a lot of time, and when we're, we're granting those type of authorities, we want to make sure that, you know, we receive the best deal possible with regards to that. So I want to officially note that for the record.
So I'll also mention, Senator, that at our last, at our last budget hearing, fiscal 2022, the legislature did authorize funding so that we can add additional staff to support, and we will stand up the commercial review team, compliance, things of that sort. So we appreciate the legislature in supporting us on that.
I just want a clean process. I mean, if I were on the other side of the table, knowing the weaknesses of the government, I, I think I could figure out how to outdo things, to make things in my interest and not yours. And you need to think that way. I mean, the government's always at a disadvantage because it isn't geared up to do that, and I think that's what we want to ensure, so that those monies that are gained, in this case, from, from these landing fees, they're properly used, and they're, you know, you're able to garner them and, and put them to the appropriate use. I think that's what we want. We want that level of transparency in the operations of the Land Trust, which, like I said, historically, maybe you can prove us wrong at some point. I'd, I'd love to see that, I really would. But I, I'm just noting that for the record, because this, and I'm sure this legislation will be debated, there's so many changes, there's so many underlines in this bill that really change so much of, of the authorities of what you've had and what we're giving. I'm sure there'll be a lot of debate and discussion when this bill does hit the floor, but again, for the record, I just want to note that, because I, I don't want to see us go back to where we were. I think we all want to move forward with that. I know it's, you know, getting late, Madam Speaker, and I'm not going to, I don't have any other additional questions. I think we've elaborated on quite a number of those with questions asked by my colleagues earlier. So thank you also for taking the time, joining us this evening, and certainly being able to ask our questions and providing us some enlightenment on, on exactly what's involved. I know it's a very expensive, cumbersome process to even construct these lines. I mean, it's amazing we live in the world we do today, where we're able to communicate instantaneously, get information instantaneously. So I think we see the mutual benefit for the government and for our people, and also to allow our private companies to be able to do the work that they need to do. And I like the fact that we're starting to standardize this process. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you, and thank you to everyone for being here and responding to our questions.
Thank you, Senator. Ms. Santas?
I do want to add, Senator Brown, that accountability has been one that we've been trying to improve with transparency. If you go back to our commission meetings, you'll see that being pushed forward with questions, commercial leases, and all of that, well, all the commission members are involved. And in the past, you, you wouldn't see that. You wouldn't see that. But now this commission, you'll, you'll see the, the, our diligent work being pursued in our meetings.
I appreciate that. I feel very much if these things can be, you know, conducted in the light of day, then we'll have less issue of concern. It's very hard to do all those bad things when the sun is shining on you. So, I mean, I, again, I want you guys to prove me wrong. I want you to step up to the plate and, and address, you know, what has happened in the past, that it doesn't happen moving forward. I mean, we've had as recent issues as last year with Land Trust and your executive director. I mean, let's be frank about that. I, I think we're collectively getting tired of that sort of thing. We, and I'm sure any company that's dealing with the government or dealing with the Land Trust, I mean, you just want professional, you know, upfront, direct engagement, and that we know if this is what we're paying for, this is what we're paying for, and, you know, we don't have all this other nonsense that's included in the process, and that the money's properly spent, that's all. Again, Madam Speaker, thank you, and thank you to the Land Trust for responding.
Senator, if I may, Senator Brown? As, you know, as the largest commercial lessie for the Chamor Land Trust, I think we represent maybe 70% of the Chamor Land Trust revenues at this point, GTA. We've had wonderful experiences with the Land Trust Commission, and, you know, in, in, in support of them. They've been very, very good landlords and lessors to us. I mean, it, it all stems back to our first major lease with the asset purchase agreement when GTA was privatized, up until 3646, most recently. But, and they make sure we don't go sideways, and of course, go sideways as well, with whatever financial obligations we have to the community for the leases that we have. But they've been a very good entity at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Brown, and again, thank you to all my colleagues for their questions and comments. And before I close, I, I have a couple of questions, and then I'd like to give you, each of your companies an opportunity to add anything else that you think that we've discussed, that you want to, to also add some comments. My, my question is, does the open access discussion, does that require additional language? Do you think we need to regulate that somehow in this bill or another bill? Let's start with, I think it's DOCOMO?
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think it's a big issue. I think that for us, open access is required by our customers. So our customers will come into, in a certain route, on a certain cable, and they will say, I, they'll give you a very specific routing that they want. So if I go, if they come in on one cable at GTA and they say, I want to interconnect with DOCOMO, then I, I pay a reasonable fee to GTA to interconnect at their station and go on. And if they, if they jack those rates up too high for me, the customer won't accept that. They won't accept that billing. So the, the, the market itself will equalize that interconnection, that fair, fair treatment. So, any one of us who landed a cable could not, you know, artificially, you know, gouge somebody for the, in the pricing of that. So I don't think it's a big issue, at least from, on the commercial side.
All right, thank you. GTA?
I, you know, I concur, Mr. Boss. GTA, our facilities are already designed that way for open access. You come in and want to make a commercial arrangement and agreement with us, payer bills, bills on time and vice versa, we're fine with that. I don't think, I don't think you need to make any modifications.
Okay.
It really is, it's commercial terms, and when someone's landing a cable, they're going to want to make sure they can do the cross-connects as part of the commercial arrangements. So it really isn't something I think associated with the legislation.
All right. Thank you. Is it, if that's the case, Mr. Russ or PDS? Any other?
I was just going to say, I fully agree with the last Jim, that it's really a commercial issue. It's policy-driven. No additional language should be required by government.
You know, I just have to relate to our experience. I can tell you that there's been issues with access to some of the new facilities, particularly the PD location. We spent almost two years trying to gain access and cross-connection at the, at the PD location. We also experienced anti-competitive agreements that exist between the owners of that cable system, where basically they, they have the last right of refusal to provide services to carriers that are bringing cable or capacity into the cables, cable station. So, yeah, I think, I think it is a problem, and it's particularly a problem with the people that have these facilities. And, you know, at PBS, we use their facilities. We don't have our own facilities. And so, to a great extent, you are, you are, you're at their mercy in terms of some of these owners' agreements or different practices, or quite frankly, just lack of response. So, you know, I don't know if this is the, if this is the place to, to address that, but, but it is a problem. And I think, you know, as we see, you know, access at the AT&amp;T facilities, for example, has always been terrible and always been difficult. Access to PD has not been, it's been better than AT&amp;T, but it has some significant problems. And those problems are, for the most part, originate from GTA. And the facilities at Tata are relatively open. So I would say, so of the three main cable landing stations on Guam, I guess there's four, of the four cable landing stations, three of them have very poor and difficult access that should be addressed. There's only one that has what I would consider to be open access, and that's based on my experience with dealing with, with systems in Hawaii and California. Those, those systems on Guam are very restricted.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to be frank with you. I wouldn't know how to address that. So if you have any recommendation, you're welcome to submit it, and I will consider whether it's relevant to this bill or not, or whether, what we would do with it. But, but I thank you. And so again, I'm inviting input on regional rates, particularly a definition, how you would define that type of structure, and, and the rates themselves. And input, I would like input as well on this cable landing system definition or how you would define it. I think somebody said a single leg. I think you used the word leg cable, that type of thing. Yeah, if you, I would recommend, I would welcome input from any of you regarding that type of requirement or, or language. All right. And yeah, and so before I close, yeah, I'm very grateful to all of you for being here. Could not have done this without you. It's very clear to me that the pricing of this type of landing is very, it's not available. It's almost impossible to find. We were able to find, like, for example, the example of Find Singapore. If I could do that, I would have done that, and it's very difficult. So if any one of you wants to offer that, I'm welcoming that as well. However, we discussed this before. So what we did was, we found one that we were able to look at, and that was the Hermosa Beach, of course, and Garden Grove. And so there were some pricing available there, and we pretty much structured it close to that. And we, of course, we looked at the Sunshine Coast, which is a totally different model, which I would love to do for Guam, but we're not there with this bill at all. And in that case, it looked like the, it was, it was the city that put in the infrastructure itself and then leased it out. But, yeah, I don't believe we are able to do this, so we are willing, the government of Guam is willing to enter into this type of partnership with private industry. We want to do this in the correct time, which is as fast as possible to avail ourselves of this industry and not to be bypassed here on Guam, so that we can benefit from it as much as possible for the, for the great needs that we do have. This bill, again, does not address any other submerged lands except for those within the jurisdiction of the Tomorrow Land Trust right now. It does not address the landing sites themselves, I mean, the terrestrial sites of these cable systems. We have seen that some of these are private properties. I've encouraged the Tomorrow Land Trust and the Ancestral Lands Commission to also look at their terrestrial sites along the coast to see if, you know, that's some possibilities for them as well. I am looking forward to the partnership with, with the coastal management program to, to kind of get ahead of this and to lay out in advance for all of you some of the ideal, I don't know if they would be corridors, but definitely ideal sites with less impacts that we can determine right away. And, and so of course, our goal is always lessen the environmental harm, continue to allow access to fishermen as much as possible and for recreational use. Now, I understand that it may be, and there are other jurisdictions that use corridors, and that that's to increase the safety of the cables themselves, so that we kind of restrict use, right? So your cables are protected, nobody can interfere with them, and, you know, we, we can consider that, I think, with the, with the work of Bureau Statistics and Plans, to make sure that we don't lay these down where they interfere with any other use and, and that they will also protect our cables. So hopefully, a win-win if we can get that. And I know that we're trying to diversify the landing locations around the island for the redundancy that you need, and so we're also looking at the east side and other avenues. So I'm very excited about it. I, I'm not an expert by any means, so again, I appreciate your input, and I, this has been a very exciting, challenging for sure, but very exciting for Guam, I think. I know that Senator Taitukui, maybe years ago, put a bill in to, for GIDA to do a task force to determine how Guam is going to move forward in this type of industry. But again, we're still waiting for the, you know, feedback on that. But, so I am very glad. Thank you again for your willingness to come in and testify, to give us your suggestions. I very much appreciate your recommendations, and I'm optimistic, since there is, seems to be an agreement, that we are going to be, that this bill will end up with a fair process and one that is of good value to Guam. So I'm very excited about that, and again, grateful for your assistance in this regard. Again, I want to thank all of you. And there being no additional individuals to present further testimony, this committee will consider Bill Number 277-36COR and Bill Number 278-36COR duly heard. And the public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 6:38 PM. Sidoos Masi. Thank you.